All right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Today is Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Legions? Thank you. In the event of a fire or other emergency, please follow the exit signs that are provided in this room and throughout all hall. Upon exiting this room, the main exits are located to the front and rear of the building. Do not use the elevator during an emergency. Live streaming and recorded meeting services is provided through the Town of Amherst YouTube channel. Will the Secretary to the Zoning Board please call the role?
Chairman Bray.
Here.
Vice Chair Schubert.
President.
Member Phillips.
Here.
Member Parker.
Here.
Member Gergen.
Thank you. Announcement beforehand, item number 14 for 21 Forest Stream will not be considered tonight. They have, the applicant has to amend the request, so that will be considered at the January meeting. The first item on tonight's agenda is several properties on South Linden Street. Would the applicant please come to the podium? Please make your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Palumbo. I'm with the law firm of Black Longo, representing the petitioner here this evening. You can go to the next slide, please. This is a picture, an elevation of what my client would like to build on the property, and we'll go through some of the history. But I wanted to show you right off the bat what we're talking about. It's a combination essentially of townhouse and apartment units. Next. So just by way of a brief history, the applicant purchased the property on South Linden from the town of Amherst. We negotiated the terms of the purchase back in 2023 and 2024. So we purchased the property the end of 2023. We then proceeded to ask the town board to amend the comprehensive plan. In November of 2024, the town board did amend the comprehensive plan and they incorporated multifamily development for this site. Next, we moved on with respect to the issue of the rezoning approval, which followed the comprehensive plan update, and the town board in August of this year rezoned the property to MFR 5, which would allow the development as being proposed. In terms of the project scope and status, what I've showed you is the elevation of the buildings. There are actually going to be two buildings. One of them will be a 12-unit building. The second one is a 16-unit building across two and a, almost two and a half acres of land. There are garages that come with it for the 24 units. Next. So why are we here this evening? We're here for what was one variance but has now turned into two variances. The first variance that we're asking for is the building separation between the two proposed buildings. The code requirement for the separation between the two buildings is 40.5 feet. What we've proposed is 21.85 feet, leaving us a variance request of 18.7 feet. There are no other setback requirements, no dimensional requirements, no landscape variances, nothing else is being required. We tried to design this to limit the number of variances before this board. Next, the second variance has to do with the frontage. This is considered a two-frontage lot, with the main frontage being on Whirly Drive and the second frontage being on McIntyre Road, which is right in here. So this is McIntyre, this is Whirly, this is the private road that leads into the development, the two buildings as I've described, and the garage is here. So the variance is, the second variance that was added has to do with the fact that we have McIntyre as one of our frontages, and we have proposed a fence of three feet along that frontage, and we're asking the board, as a result of the discussion that we've had with the planning department, to raise the height of the fence to six feet. So it's a fairly small variance and one that the planning department has asked us to seek. Next. This is a, just a blow up of the site plan, a little more detail. You can see the separation between the two buildings. And I would point out a very important fact, that we are on the agenda for the planning board this week for site plan approval, if in fact this board grants the variance. As part of the review, this has been, the site plan review, the site plan has been submitted to every town agency, the building department, highway department, so on and so forth. Most importantly, it's also gone to the fire and safety folks who have approved the site plan as is. They have no objection to the variance being granted. They have no objection to the distance that we're proposing between the two buildings. Next. So we've shown you the key features of the site plan. We don't need to spend any more time on that. Next. Again, just another picture, the elevation of the buildings. Next. So you are all very well aware that this is an area variance. Both variances that we are requesting are area variances. The standard you all know very well, you deal with it in every hearing, the benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. And I would submit to you that the benefit to the applicant here is the ability to realize a reasonable rate of return by having the 28 units. This has been going on, as I've indicated, since 2023. The cost of the supplies, the cost of the building materials, the taxes, the engineering, everything that's gone into this has resulted in the fact that we need to have 28 units to make this a viable project. So that's the benefit to the applicant. Should the variance be granted, he will be able to move forward with the proposal as originally intended, so that he could realize a reasonable rate of return. So the factors, again, I'll go through them very quickly, because I know you have a very large agenda this evening. Number one is the character of the neighborhood. And we went to great pains to show the planning board and the town board what actually is the character of the neighborhood. We do have single-family folks adjacent to us on one side. We have the lamppost on another side. There are multifamily districts in the area. There are single-family districts in the area. OTB is in the area. It's a very mixed district. So to add additional rental units to the area is not out of harmony with what currently exists. So we don't believe by granting the variance, we will produce any undesirable change or detriment to the nearby properties. No impact on the neighborhood character is expected. And as I've indicated, the distance between the proposed buildings and adjacent homes remains compliant. We don't have any other setbacks. We're not bringing this any closer to the residential units adjacent to us than what the code allows. In fact, we've increased that distance. Next, feasible alternative. We unfortunately have no other feasible alternatives to allow this number of units, which will allow the petitioner, who is not a developer, by the way, he actually owns a plumbing business, he is, he, as I've indicated, to realize a reasonable rate of return, this is what we need, 28 units. And there was some discussion at one point in time about breaking the buildings up into smaller buildings with four to six units. And we took a look at that, and we discussed this with the town board. Were we to do it some other way and eliminate the variance between buildings, we would increase the number of variances we'd be requesting by tenfold because of the setbacks. We'd have to have more buildings closer to the property line, which we've tried to avoid from the very beginning. So that's why you see other configurations fail to better utilize the unique site layout. Next, substantial variance. And again, you're all very familiar with this factor. It's not simply a mathematical formula. The question is, what is the impact if this board grants the variance? And we would indicate to you that there really is no substantial impact. Whether the building is 40 feet or 20 feet, it really makes no difference, particularly given the fact that the fire and safety and all the other agencies have approved the site plan the way it is. Excuse me. Next. Factor four, the environmental impact question. We have no adverse impacts on drainage, no negative effects on any traffic circulation. We have two methods of ingress and egress into the project through McIntyre and Whirly, no harm to local flora or fauna or anything like that. So we believe that we have complied with this factor as well. And finally, the fifth factor, whether or not the hardship is self-created. And here we would argue that it's not self-created because it arises from the unique site configuration and the property that we acquired from the town. Essentially, we took the property as is. And again, I don't have to remind this board that even if the difficulty is self-created, if you find it to be, then it represents only one of the five factors to be evaluated. So in conclusion, I would just say, go back to the very beginning, the benefit versus the detriment and the balancing test that I believe weighs in our favor. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any member of the board have a question for the applicant?
I do. Mr. Palumbo, I'm not suggesting that you do this, but if you just built this as one building, would you need any variances?
Well, there might be other variances regarding the length of the building itself and those types of things. And I think Dan is nodding his head to agree with that. There would be additional variances required.
Okay, I was just curious. All right. But fire safety is okay with?
Fire safety is approved.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any member of the audience here to speak on this item?
I just was wondering, the Whirly frontage, what's going to happen? I mean, because you could have conceivably shifted it towards Whirly.
Yeah.
Sorry. The land that is on Whirly between the buildings and Whirly, what is happening there?
That's, the site plan, I wish I would have put it up there. It's heavily treeed. We've put a substantial amount of brush and shrubbery, again, that's been approved by the landscape architect.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Close the hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve both variances.
Motion by Member Schubert. Is there a second? Second by Member Parker. All favorites say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Yes, it's 5-0. Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is 32 Glen Meadow Drive, area variance. Would the applicant please come to the podium? Sorry. Twilight, I'm sorry. 105 Twilight.
Chairman, before I begin this presentation, I just want to bring up item number 15 on the agenda, which is actually my application, and confirm that I'm asking for that to be adjourned. I know there's a resident here, and I was hoping you could just get that off the table, so.
Did I, did I?
Item number, no, 15, 21 Forest Stream.
14 is 21.
What's? 21 Forest Stream.
14. That's, that's 14 on mine.
Oh, and the one I printed, it's 15, but I don't know.
14 on mine. Was there an update to the agenda? Yes. So number, so 21 Forest Stream is, we're not considering today, correct?
Yes, and leaving the hearing open until your January meeting.
Yep.
So if the, if the board could take care of that, then that particular resident doesn't have to stick around.
Yes, that, we will not consider that tonight.
Thank you. So now turning our attention to 105 Twilight Lane. This is a continuation of a public hearing you held during your October meeting. We're also seeking the exact same variance that was granted by the zoning board of appeals, all the way back on January 24th of 2017. Greg, if you could go to the next slide? So as I indicated during the previous public hearing, this is part of a much larger transaction that occurred approximately a decade ago. So the original parcel, which was known as 9434 Transit Road, was 61.26 acres that was zoned R3. For at least a decade, what was proposed there was a very large residential subdivision. Ultimately, that did not go forward because of a whole host of concerns: drainage, traffic, wetlands, impacts to Gott Creek, et cetera, et cetera. Then my client entered into discussions with the then-town board, and on December 7th of 2016, my client entered into a contract with the town by which they conveyed all but a very small portion of the site to the town in exchange for 4.78 acres at 1,047 Campbell Boulevard. So basically, we conveyed almost 60 acres in exchange for slightly less than five acres. And the second to last bullet point is the most important one here. The contract that was entered into at that time explicitly stated that my client was retaining 1.28 acres, which is what we're in front of you this evening, 105 Twilight Lane, for the individual lot to be serviced by a driveway connecting to Twilight Lane, meaning there was no discussion about extending the public roadway. There was no discussion about having more than one single-family home on this one parcel that my client retained. A deed was recorded all the way back on December 31st of 2016, and as a result, the town increased its amount of parkland by 55.2 acres. The variance that we're asking to reconsider or grant once again is as follows. The lot itself, and the lot has already been created, has 50 feet of frontage on the end of Twilight, whereas the zoning code would require 65 feet of frontage. It is important to note that the parcel itself is 660% bigger than the minimum required lot size of 8,450 square feet. It's 1.28 acres or 55,800 square feet. Next slide. This is an aerial photograph, and that parcel where I have the arrow is where we're talking about. You can see the remainder with Gott Creek over on the right-hand side. All of that is now parkland that's been owned by the town for nine years. Next slide. There's a survey showing the parcel, and again, you can see where Twilight Lane ends. We're proposing to utilize the existing driveway and have a turnaround area for snowplows. Next slide. The copy of the ZBA decision letter issued on January 25th of 2017. I do want to note, and it was subsequently approved, there was a condition that was important. The third condition stated as follows. The applicant shall work with the building department and the highway department to come up with a plan for plowing, plow turnaround, and snow storage. That plan was negotiated and approved by the then-highway superintendent. Next slide. This is a copy of the plan. It's important to note, we always knew this parcel had some wetlands, so we worked closely with the Army Corps of Engineers and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And you can see, we're basically stuck with this footprint, and we're stuck with this driveway location off Twilight Lane. And there is a construction driveway exactly in that location today. It's also important to note that during the previous public hearing, there were some concerns about drainage. We will require a building permit for the single-family home. We actually have entered into a contract with a purchaser, and rest assured, as they always do, the building department will be confirming that we're meeting applicable drainage standards. There's no denying the fact that in the adjacent residential neighborhood that goes all the way back to the 70s, that simply predates current drainage standards. So it's not surprising there may be drainage issues there today, but they're not attributable to my client, and they're certainly not attributable to this very minor request for a lot frontage variance for a single-family home. Next slide. So this is new information. We have been finalizing wetland mitigation per the requirements of the DEC, and since we were here last month, we've installed 41 plantings and 45 black spruce trees as required by the DEC, and we've also installed the required wetland monuments. That's all been taken care of and is summarized in a letter from Scott Livingston to Chuck Rosenberg of the DEC dated November 15th. Next slide. So obviously, this is governed by the balancing test and the five criteria. The benefits are very, very clear here. In the absence of this variance, we basically own a lot that was worthless, despite the fact that it was always contemplated for a single-family home, and despite the fact that the zoning board of appeals has already previously granted this variance. Next slide. And then in terms of the five criteria, whether the granted the requested relief will result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, the answer to that is no. Again, one very large lot coming off the end of Twilight Lane. Criteria number two, whether there's any way we can receive the benefits that we would seek, that we would obtain if the requested relief is granted without the need for a variance? No. I mean, simply the frontage on Twilight Lane is the frontage that's there today. If a question came up about installing a public roadway, there's two responses. Number one, it would render the project completely economically feasible. But secondly, and more importantly, from this board's perspective, we can't do that and remain in compliance with the wetland permits issued by the DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers. The third criteria is whether the requested area variance is substantial, and the key inquiry there being whether there's any harm. And the answer to that is no. Again, a single-family home on a lot that's been contemplated for development now for a decade, and again, the ZBA already granted this variance before. Next slide. Whether granted the requested relief will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, the answer is no. We have all the permits. We actually have a floodplain permit as well, and this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker. Criteria number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. And as you know, almost every single time I come in front of this board, I acknowledge that that criteria can't be satisfied. Here, I guess I would ask you to consider something different, given that this is pursuant to a contract that was entered into the town back in 2015. My client fulfilled the obligations of the contract, and now simply seeking the benefit of one single-family home on one lot on what was originally more than 60 acres. So with all that being said, we are asking that you grant the exact same relief that was granted on January 25th of 2017. As I indicated, my client finally has a purchase contract that, of course, is contingent on this approval being issued. There's any questions, of course, of either myself or Elliot Lasky, who is a longtime owner of this property, would welcome the opportunity to address them.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant? Is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Want to come to the podium, please?
Hello again. Hello again. My name is Rosie Spaniolo, and I am here to speak in opposition of 105 Twilight Lane. We are the adjacent neighbors on 101 Twilight Lane. Beautiful presentation, however, we missed the topic of safety at the end. 50 feet versus the 65 feet. That simply does not allow for fire trucks to safely turn around. God forbid there was a fire at the home that's built. Garbage trucks, I actually called the garbage people. I called the highway department, and I have my ducks in a row for this one, based off of public safety. Like I was stating, God forbid there was something wrong, there was a fire. How is a fire truck, let alone an aerial fire truck, able to safely come down the one lane of Twilight Lane that allows the 50 feet? It's physically and mathematically impossible to turn around there. And a garbage truck, less of an issue, but how are you supposed to get a garbage truck to then turn around with just the 50 feet that is allotted there? On paper, it's only a 15-feet difference, 65 to 50. However, when you take the time to really mull on the everyday life of the in-and-out activities that happen, that 15 feet is a big deal. Like I said, fire truck cannot come down there. Garbage truck cannot come down there. Snowplow, I'm sure they can figure something out, back drag it, whatnot. But safety and public safety is the matter at hand. He then stated about a roundabout. He is right. You cannot add that. And per Stephen Floss from the highway department superintendent, he has no plans on his desk to further the extension of Twilight Lane. He also said that the roundabout would not be possible, and the layout itself was not made to develop there. And I wasn't going to talk about this, but since Mr. Hopkins brought it up, yes, this whole entire neighborhood, since it preceded me, has been going to bat and expressing their concerns of building all of the full neighborhood down to the single-family home. They actually just decided to go down the single-family home because it wasn't working. And there's still till this day many concerns via the drainage, safety, and everything. I actually spoke to the Army Corps of Engineers, and he also said that if there were to be a roundabout, they would have to then re-get a different permit to dig up any land there. So before I get too much ahead of myself, I'm happy to answer any questions so far. So again, I'm going to ask you to hear my voice against a very large opposition against little old me. Public safety is going to be the biggest thing. You simply just cannot, and as Mr. Hopkins stated, it is not feasible to extend what is already there. So without extending it, it's mathematically and physically impossible to get public safety vehicles down if, God forbid, the occurrence ever happened. Thank you so much for your time, and I really hope that it helps.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Elliot Lasky. I'm the owner of the property and have owned the property for approximately 26 years. I don't want to go into a whole history of a development that was proposed with 60-some-odd lots and what transpired afterwards. But back in 2015, we negotiated with the town board and we executed the agreement, I believe, in the end of 2016 or 17, that I would be entitled to one lot in exchange for 60 acres. And I received less than four and a half acres that I donated to the town years earlier on another project, but they had no plans to build a park over there. I have spent approximately $70,000 working with the permits at the time from the DC and the Corps of Engineer to clear the site, to bring in the fill, compacted. It was removed from the floodplain. The lomer was processed through the building department. Unfortunately, for quite a few years, I've been trying to market the property. With COVID in the middle, I've had no success. I finally do have a contract that's contingent on this variance. I've paid in, over the years, approximately $50,000 in taxes, and without a variance, the parcel is worthless. Now, the neighbor who spoke, I really have to thank her. For years, every time my sales manager would come with customers, either she or her husband would make sure they would intervene and somehow create a negative feeling for the potential customers that constantly got turned off because they didn't want to be neighbors. As far as garbage goes, it would be the obligation of the homeowner to bring the garbage to the property line, not the garbage truck going all the way up the area. The distance of the fire hydrant is within the allowable distance, and there is no reason a fire truck cannot go up the driveway and turn around on the pavement area that's going to be created for the home over there. There is no traffic and safety problem over there. Furthermore, two and a half weeks ago, I got a call from the Army Corps of Engineer, Zach Adams, several neighbors, not sure who they were, called, "We're affecting all the drainage. We're changing the, you've got to come out immediately. There's a violation." He checked it out. All I was doing was planting the trees that were a condition of the DC permit. As well, there was a town inspector that came out. He also got a call. And when he saw what we were doing in compliance with the permit, there's no violation and there's no issue. Without this variance, I will have had over $120,000 that I've spent in the last 10 years on a piece of property that would be worthless. And it doesn't change the quality of life for any of the neighbors. The house is not on top of anyone. It's set back far. It's the way I understand that it's going to be an estate home. I'm not building it. It's a private party that will be building its own home. And all I ask is for the same variance that was given years ago that expired because I had no buyer, to give the same exact variance. I'm not asking any other conditions on it. Thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, with that, we'll close the hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Chairman, before you consider the motion, I want to just remind the zoning board of three conditions that were imposed on the last variance. Our office introduced a new condition in lieu of that, so I would ask that you either renew the three conditions that were previously imposed or renew the three conditions that were previously imposed or accept the draft condition or modify it to your liking.
So the draft condition on this item is Twilight Lane shall be extended to accommodate a road termination of sufficient size as directed by the highway superintendent.
That's our draft condition. The previous conditions that were imposed by the zoning board in 2017 was number one, to be a single-family home. Two, lots shall not be further subdivided. Three, the applicant shall work with the Building Department, the Highway Department, to come up with a plan for plowing, plow turnaround, and snow storage. So I think what's critical here is that the highway superintendent be satisfied for what needs he may have to accommodate snow plowing actions.
Yeah, so on behalf of the applicant, we would ask you impose the same original conditions as was discussed and actually confirmed by the resident as well. There is absolutely no opportunity to extend that as a public road, but we are okay with the three conditions that were originally imposed, and we will comply with those. And I think they protect the town.
But you're saying you're going to add, you want to add one condition?
I'm suggesting you either renew the three that were previously part of the original decision, or you add number one to take care of the concern for snow maintenance. Or develop your own condition.
What, was the, was the snow just pushed at the end of the street? Is that the issue?
No, can you go back to the, Greg, can you go back to the plan? And I do want to confirm, the highway superintendent has changed his son. So the then-highway superintendent allowed us to designate a snow storage area here. Ken Zalich, myself, recently met with Mr. Ulatowski, and Ken has worked, Ken has reached out again to the current highway superintendent. So, you know, that'll need to be reviewed and approved by him, and we're okay with that. There's really nowhere else it can go without encroaching in the wetlands, so I think the original conditions do the trick. There's no way we can extend that.
When we met with Mr. Hopkins, it was agreed upon that there would be some form of an easement legally allowing the town to dispose of the snow on private land, and I haven't seen that yet, so.
That's a good point. So let's go back to the conditions that were actually originally imposed by the ZBA. If you want to put a fourth condition, and I actually would agree with Dan on this, that an easement be granted to the town of Amherst for the snow storage area on site, that's fine. And we're just simply not there yet, Dan, because we don't know where they want it. But that would be acceptable. And that's been done on other similar examples. So the fourth condition would be that the applicant grant an easement to the town of Amherst for the use of the snow storage area.
All right, so the applicant has a, the applicant has recommended that we continue with the first three conditions opposed as well as the fourth, that the easement be granted to the town for a snow storage site.
That's letter dated January 25th, 2017.
Correct. Your previous ZBA decision letter.
Well, I'll move again for approval.
With, with, with those four conditions, or is there a different condition? All right. Member Schubert has made a motion with those four conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Gergen. Can I get a roll call on this?
Chairman Bray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schubert?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
Yeah.
Member Parker?
Member Gergen.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is 5-0. We're on to the next item on tonight's agenda. That is 32 Glen Meadow Drive. Would the applicant please come to the podium?
Good evening once again. Sean Hopkins on behalf of the applicant, Essex Homes of Western New York. We're seeking a variance for an existing parcel located at 32 Glen Meadow Drive. Go to the next slide, Greg. We all remember the site itself, split-zoned MFR 4A at SA, approximately 15.57 acres in size, and was previously approved for a residential subdivision. Next slide. There's the actual layout, 29 lots. The only thing we're discussing tonight is lot number two, which is located here. Next slide. So we were here last month asking for three, what I think the board thought was much more substantial variances, or two variances. Number one, we were asking for lots two, three, and four, which are highlighted there in yellow. We're asking for a variance to allow the rear yard setback to be decreased from 20 feet, which is required by the code, to nine feet, and that would be to accommodate a single-story sunroom. And then secondly, based on that change, to allow a lot coverage of 48% versus 40%. The board denied that request, so we've gone back to the drawing board. We will not be seeking any variances for lots three or four. We're seeking one minor variance for lot two. Next slide. It's also important to note, as part of the original approvals, we did voluntarily install a fence. This particular lot, lot number two, is protected by that existing six-foot fence, which has a distance of approximately 300 feet. And I do want to note, the adjoining proprietor did oppose the variances that we were asking for last month as well. Next slide. So here's what we're asking for. The zoning code allows a maximum lot coverage of 40%. We're asking for this lot and this lot only for that to be increased to 42%. Most importantly, it is simply a small increase of the footprint. This is one of their standard home types. We actually have a contract here, and this person is interested in this home. We are not asking for any encroachment whatsoever into the rear yard setback. And in fact, we're showing a rear yard setback of 21 feet. So this house will not include a sunroom on the back or anything else that would encroach into that setback. It's simply the footprint itself of the main house is 2% larger than what would be required. And just to quantify that, it's literally about 110 square feet, a very minimal, minimal amount that, in fact, I don't think would be discernible if you drove down the street after the house is completed. Next slide. This is governed by the balancing test and the five criteria. The benefits in this instance are very clear. We actually now have a purchase contract for this particular lot. The home plans that have been agreed to by the parties, subject to you granting a variance, show a lot coverage of 42%. In the absence of the variance, obviously, we cannot fulfill the obligations we have pursuant to that contract. Next slide. The five criteria, whether or not granted the requested relief will result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties? No. And I want to confirm again for everyone, we will be complying with the rear yard setback of 20 feet. Whether the benefits that we're seeking can be obtained by some other method other than the requested relief while still receiving our benefits? No. Again, we have a contract for a house with a footprint or a lot coverage of 42% versus 40%. Whether it's substantial? No. It's literally 2%, it's about a 5% deviation, 40% versus 42%. Whether it will result in any adverse effects on the, or adverse effects or impacts on the physical or environmental conditions? No. This is a type-two action. It's also important to note, then in connection with the previous review of the project, both the town board and the planning board did issue negative declarations. And then finally, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Here, I acknowledge, we're familiar with the requirements of the zoning code, so you could view this as being alleged self-created hardship. However, given the overall balancing test, given that we've gone back to the drawing board, reduced the magnitude of the variance, and given the fact that we're saying unequivocally on the record, we're not seeking variances for any of the lots, we would ask respectfully that you grant this variance so we can move forward with this particular single-family home on this particular lot that does, that will comply with the rear yard setback and won't result in any perceived or otherwise impacts to the adjoining proprietor. If there's any questions, obviously, I would welcome the opportunity to address them.
So how, how did this happen where you need this, this variance now?
So let's go back, we go back to the, so basically what happened is we got denied, as you recall, last month. We quickly went back to the drawing board, and for this particular lot, we had someone who was interested in building this particular house. So we quickly filed a new variance application, getting rid of all the other relief, which, again, this viewed, this board viewed as being substantial, and simply limited to this.
So it's just a bigger model?
It's actually the standard model. It's just, it's the model that's most prevalent throughout that subdivision today, except it doesn't have the sunroom or the covered portion of that.
Is, is the lot a different size than the other lots, then?
Yeah, the lots. So can we go back to the overall plan? If you go actually to the next slide. So because we had to make an effort to minimize the impact of wetlands, the lots on this side, which is where we are, are actually 10 feet less in depth. So on this side, that's why we previously got the variances for the remainder of that road, again, because we minimized the wetland impacts, and those lots have a little bit less depth. The other ones are larger. And that was based on input during that wetland permitting review process.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant? All right, is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Just come to the podium.
Pam Curcio. I'm at 1745 Dodge. We also own 1755. My husband and I were here at the meeting last month when you said no to the variance. Unfortunately, about five days after that, my husband fell down the basement stairs and broke his hip. He also has Alzheimer's, and so I, I've made some notes, but it's kind of been a difficult month for me. So I was kind of surprised when I got the letter about the variance. I still don't quite understand what Mr. Hopkins is saying. All I know is that they want to make a larger home, I think, is what he's saying. I don't know.
So that would be a question better answered by Mr. Hopkins. In a conversation before this, we can't answer that question for him. So the variance before us tonight is to use, to build on 42% of the lot size instead of 40%.
So if it's building on 42% of the lot size, where is it going? Like, he's saying that he's not, he's saying that the setback is not changing, which was my main concern last month, because my deck is right there. So is it getting wider, or is it getting taller? What's the 2%? I mean, I don't.
Ma'am, you can ask your questions of the board. They will, they have a typical response. This is not a give and take at the public hearing, okay? So you can give all the present, then you can quit. It's not a give and take with the board.
Okay. Well, the only thing I want to say also is a little bit of a backstory on this. So when this project was started in 2020, I came down to the planning board. I thought somebody was just moving, possibly bought the house from Mrs. Feagel, and then I discovered that it was actually a development that was going to go in. So they brought the plans out, and my main concern, the only thing I ever wanted and asked for was a fence to go from the, from where it is all the way to the creek for privacy reasons. There are 14 properties within a beanbag toss to my property. Most of us go home, and we have one person on this side, one person on that side, and one person behind. I have 14 homes being built along my property line. And for whatever reason, I think some of these people think I'm the concierge of Glen Meadows, because they keep coming up, you know, that I've literally have been here 29 years, have never had a problem with the town. People have called me, the grass is too high. They don't like the sticks. We lost probably 60 or 70 ash trees with the ash burrow that we cut up, and we had them stacked. All of a sudden, oh no, those can't stay there. They need to be up 18 inches so we don't have any chipmunks running around. Well, this is a preserve. There are chipmunks. There's past the creek, there's thousands of them. So it's just been one thing after the other, and the latest one was just two weeks ago. I get a man come to my door. Oh, backstory a little bit. When we didn't get the fence, I was told to make sure I post my land, no trespassing. So we did various trees along our property line. That was recommended to me actually by somebody from the town and also friends and family. So I get a man come to my door. All I know is he's Peter, and he's bought a home somewhere between the barn and the creek, and now he wants me to take down my trespassing signs.
So ma'am, could you just keep your comments to the request that is being made before us today?
Well, I think basically what I'm saying, one of the things I want to say is that if I was told when I came in originally with the planning board, I can't have a fence because all the plans have been determined, have been approved, and basically Essex has the green light to go and do what was, and she said they'd take it very seriously. If there's a tree here, there's going to be a tree there, there's a setback, there's a setback. Each, each lot is supposed to do as it's set in the plan, and you don't get a fence because it's not in the plan. And now they can walk back with an eraser and start changing the plans.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? Let's come to the podium.
Hi, everyone. My name's David Giffen, and my wife, Mary Lou Giffen, and we are the people that.
Did you write down your address as well?
Yeah, it's on there.
Okay, thank you.
We currently live at 1190 New Road, just down the road. We've been looking for a long time. A little, you know, here's a backstory, but not really, is why we want to move there is because my sister lost her husband, and we've been taking care of her for quite a while. He's one of the people from Vietnam that was in Camp Lejeune in Agent Orange, who was out in battle. So that's the real reason to move closer to her. Another reason, I'm a disabled veteran, and I'm planning on being on a wheelchair, and that house gives more room than the other ones. That's the real reason also. I'm trying to figure out, like she just said, is where's the 2%? How does that work? But 2% of anything to me is very small. So I'm asking for your consideration for us to have that variance.
Thank you. Then, Al, sir, here to speak on this item? I'll let the applicant.
I just want to make sure we're, the resident next door has been involved the whole time with what we're asking for. So as she said tonight, as she said last month, her biggest concern was encroaching closer to her property line, which is located here, along with the fence. The plan that we've submitted that requires the minor variance of 2% complies with all setbacks, including, most importantly, from her perspective, the rear yard setback of 20 feet. So she asked, well, why is it bigger? It's bigger than what the lot coverage would require, but it does comply with each and every setback set forth in the zoning code. So my client did listen to her input from last month, and we're just trying to accommodate, again, the previous speaker who's interested in building this particular home on this particular lot that requires the very minor variance.
Thank you. Any member like to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion, my member Schubert, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note the draft condition and memorialize it. In fact, the purpose of this condition is that in 2024, the town of Amherst did not accept six and a half acres of common lands from Essex Homes. We asked at that time that they take those common lands and add them to the rest of the common lands and amend their offering plan, because we were fearful that the six and a half acres would become orphaned land. So we're renewing that as an additional condition, so I just wanted to draw your attention to it, if in fact your motion will include that or not.
I move to approve, including the condition.
Can I just comment very briefly on the condition? I just want to make clear. So Mr. Ulatowski has relayed that concern. We actually went back, I didn't prepare the offering plan, but the original offering plan, which was approved by the Attorney General's Office, and will provide a copy to Mr. Ulatowski, that land already was conveyed to the HOA or to the condo association, and it's a responsibility of the condo association. So there is. there is no need to amend it, meaning it was always done that way. Whether or not it should have been done that way, because at one point we were actually donating this property to the town, that didn't become fruition. But their offering plan itself, the original offering plan that was reviewed and approved is correct. And we'll provide confirmation of that. The only reason I'm saying is because the condition says that his or her offering plan has been amended and refiled. I think we just say that the offering plan complies because we don't need to amend it. We don't need to refile it. And I think Mr. Yulotowski, you'd be okay with that.
I have no objection to that language.
So requested reads, the petitioner provide entrance to the town attorney's office that his or her offering plan complies with the attorney general to reflect the addition of six and a half acres of common land as a result of the lands the town of Amherst did not accept for donations confirmed by the attached resolution dated April 29, 2024?
I think what we would say is, and welcome input here from Mr. Yulotowski, Mr. Ben-Gart, the petitioner provide evidence to the town attorney's office that the offering plan filed with the attorney general's office depicts the 6.5 acres of common lands being owned and subject to the requirements of the approved condominium association.
We will have the clerk to the zoning board recite that in the minutes, and it'll be reflected in the resolution to be adopted. If that's.
That would be fine. And I do want to note, Mr. Yulotowski did ask for that as part of the original approval as well.
All right, Mr. Schubert?
I accept that. I accept that and move to approve with that stipulation.
All right, we had a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's just 5-0. Thank you. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is 450 North Ivyhurst Road. Would the applicant please come to the podium?
So what we're proposing here is a four-unit town home structure on the corner of North Ivyhurst and Millersport. Kind of unique situation because of being a corner lot, we need some setback variances to be built here. But basically, what we would want to do is enter a driveway right off North Ivyhurst, eight parking spaces. They'd be two-bedroom, two-bath units. And again, we have no rendering yet. We're just kind of proposing to the town what we want to do, see what you guys would be okay with. It's been a long time vacant lot. I just acquired it this summer. And there's already zoned multifamily next door across the street. So I don't think there'll be any issues. Tenants would bring garbage to the front of their units on North Ivyhurst. We've allowed for some space in the back of the parking lot for snow removal. And there's an adjacent lot behind there, which I can speak to the neighbor and their tenants if they'd be okay with pushing snow there. We're planning to put a fence along the backside there of all the units, some brush along the sidewalks there just to enhance the neighborhood and make it look presentable.
Do you want to discuss the variances you're requesting and?
Should be on one of the slides there.
Fire those variances?
Yeah, if we could zoom in a little bit. There we go. So we're proposing a 9,000 square foot area where the zoning ordinance requires 23,000 square foot of lot area. The building will be a minimum setback of six feet along the east property line, whereas 30 feet is required. There'll be a minimum of five feet along the west property line where 30 feet is required. And it'll be a minimum of 11 feet from the north line where 30 feet is required. Parking area will be five foot nine from the road of ways where 20 feet is required. Parking area will be two feet from the south property line where five feet is required. So there's setbacks because it's a corner lot also. And we're trying to fit what we could in that tight space, allowing parking for each tenant also.
So when I see these variances, what it says to me is that you want to build something larger than what the zoning code envisions is appropriate for the lots.
Correct.
Can you make the argument on why you want to build something that is, that, why we that is an appropriate structure or structures for that lot size?
I think it's the only size that makes sense. There's four units next door. There's three, four units next door. I think it would fit the neighborhood. It would fit the area well, bring in some young professionals to the neighborhood, to the area. It's been a long time vacant lot. Nobody's done anything with it. You can see here on the plans. You know, there's been some dead trees and garbage. I've been trying to clean up as I can. But I was going to speak to the neighbor because those three units were just sold in the summer, which is how I came across this. And I don't think there's a good return on investment to build a very simple four-unit structure like that. The rents just wouldn't comply. So we tried to push the building as far right as we could, being on the corner there. You can see there's more multifamily across the street. We were going to put a fence along the sidewalk there. Height restrictions, we would be within codes. It's already zoned MFR5. We have not come up with any renderings yet to, you know, propose, but wanted to see what the town would allow. I've already spoke with the planning department about this.
Anyone have a question for the applicant? Anyone here to speak on this item? Let's close the hearing then. Have any comments? Want to make a motion?
I will say I'm not fond of the way you're saying. I understand what you're saying that we're next to another four, another four-unit building, but that is one square building on a much wider parcel.
We tried pushing the structure all the way to the left, but then it would be really hard to get cars in, parking to the right of it into that corner. With, when speaking with the planning department, we felt like this fit very well and would be a nice looking building as far as not just a typical four-unit block, you could say. You know, a lot of young professionals, UB is right there. I feel like it would bring a lot of good tenants to the area and the street. Otherwise, the vacant lot is going to be a vacant lot and an eyesore.
Would you consider the three units as opposed to four?
We talked about it, but I just don't think the return is generating though. As far as what we would charge for rent, I don't believe building, a new building would not give me enough return on three units. I think four units is the only one that makes sense.
What would someone's view from Millersport be? What, when they're driving down to Millersport, what would they see?
Back of the building, parking lot, but we were planning to put a fence along that line just to give some privacy to the tenants. We could do some shrubs, some trees instead. I feel like a fence would be more appropriate for privacy of the tenants.
So I have, I have a tough time imagining it without seeing a rendering.
Sure.
Yeah, based on, based on.
15, 15.
I would be disinclined to be in support of this, but.
Basically, a 30 by 60 building, 15 feet wide, units, two-bedroom, two-bath, upper, lower.
See, I'm seeing what the temperature is.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I mean, obviously, the board could deny, the board could do nothing. It would be a denial. The board could act on this favor. The board could also ask the applicant if he wishes to table this, have it brought back in a subsequent meeting with renderings, which might help this board better make a decision. No guarantee doing renderings is going to do anything to persuade or dissuade this board in any sense. Just another.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. It's very hard to us, for us to envision what the buildings would look like without a rendering, especially given the significance of the variances requested.
So I guess it would be up to the applicant to ask the board to take what you wish.
Is seeing a rendering going to persuade in any way?
I would say would persuade. I would say what he would help inform our decision.
Okay, okay.
Captain Rock, you'd like to go down?
We can do that, yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn that item for tonight?
I'll make the move. Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Gergen, second by member Schubert. All in favor say aye.
I have a question. Are we leaving the hearing open?
Leaving the hearing open.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that item is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on items five, was it?
Through nine, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. I have to recuse myself. So I will go for a little walk. All right.
All right.
So.
See you around.
I just want to remind the, the board of the, the possibility of default denials. So if we have a tie vote, it becomes an automatic denial. So I, I'll leave it to the petitioner to, to give you the legal ramifications of not coming to a 3-0 majority.
I'm going to hope that doesn't happen since I'm starting out handicapped.
I hope so, too.
So, I, good evening.
Yes.
Yes. To explain my concern with recusal is I do represent a tenant of a Benderson property. Benderson did tender to my client, and I did undertake representation of Benderson, one of the properties.
Yeah.
Not any of these subject properties, but one of the other properties in, in the course of my employment. I do believe that I can act independently in, in hearing these matters before us this evening. Again, my involvement is not with any of these properties. So I, if you're comfortable proceeding, I am certainly comfortable proceeding.
I would waive any, I don't believe there's conflict. You didn't represent any of these properties. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
For the record, I am comfortable if this bill is comfortable.
All right. So thank you. So we're going to present item, you're going to present items five through nine?
Yes.
We will then allow comment, public comments to each item individually, and then we'll vote on each item.
Sounds like a good plan. I did submit letters in support of all of these matters. I'm not going to read the letters. They're really long and they have exhibits. I'm going to walk through and summarize the entire project.
Can you first speak your name and address for the record?
My name is James Baglioli. I'm an attorney for Benderson Development, 570 Delaware Avenue, Buffalo, New York. I'm going to start with this slide. At a time when retail development was slowing nationally and regionally after COVID, we developed a significant retail presence in this area of Amherst. We have five properties here that comprise 165 acres of land. It's over 1.8 million square feet of development. I'm going to walk through each of the properties individually. We own property on both sides, all the property on both sides of Romney Road, and the majority of the property on the both, on North Bailey Ave. So the project here, this goes through all the frontages. We own a significant amount of frontage. Next slide, please. We have recently gotten the Costco and Dick's House of Sports approved, and they are under construction. As part of that project, we added a connection to Beaumont Parkway. So you can go now go into the development. That connection goes into the site and connects to Romney via a new signalized intersection. We actually relocated Romney to make that four-way intersection work. You can go all the way to Niagara Falls Boulevard and access all the properties. You can also continue through that roadway and access what we call Boulevard Consumer Square through an additional new signalized intersection. So we have in effect tied the entire area together. We, we call this area the Boulevard Shopping Region. And what we like to do, and I'll get in the next, in the next slide, is build a cohesive development here. So we don't view this as five separate properties. This is one combined shopping region. We want to brand the entire area with one unified sign plan tying all the properties together. All the applications are going to have the same three signs. They are a wall sign that says the Boulevard, replacing these signs in front of our pylon signs at all the corners so that it, it frames the corner. We have some new pylon signs at some of the properties I'll walk through. And then we'll have these small directional signs that go internal to the property. If you've ever been on some of these properties, especially Boulevard Consumer Square, you need some direction to get places. Now we need to direct people off-site to properties across the street and next door. It's become a real traffic hazard there, and we're trying to improve the safety of the area. So those are the three signs that we're going to be talking about. There's one additional sign on one property that I will get to when we get there. As part of this application, we're also asking for a variance on every property to allow tenant signage to be placed on freestanding signs that are not located on the parcel which the buildings occupy. So that would be putting a directional sign with an arrow to Costco. So Costco is in that direction. So if you're on Boulevard, you know you're going to go right. What's interesting is about some of these new tenants, LL Bean, Trader Joe's, Costco, people come from a very far away to go to those sites. There's not a lot of them. So we're not just dealing with Amherst residents who know what they're doing. We're dealing with people that are coming from a distance, not familiar with these shopping centers. So that's the basic application. I'm going to walk through each property and talk about the variances we need because with those three signs, we need some different variances. Next slide, please. I will walk through the five-part balancing test on that. And I know this board's aware of it. I don't want to take up your whole night, but I ask you to balance the benefit to the applicant against the health, safety, and detriment and welfare to the community. On paper, this does appear to be a lot of variances. But when you look at the region and the fact that we have 165 acres and 1.8 million square feet of development, it's not significant. The benefits to Benderson are significant. We're doing consistent branding in this area, a clear and concise signage to improve vehicular traffic, and we're strengthening the retail market both here and in Amherst because as we rise, everything around us rises. Next slide, please. So the first property, that's matter five, is 480 to 410 Maple Road. That property is in blue right here. And in this area on the site plan, you can see that it is the gateway for the new development off of Maple. So before you could not get to this property on Maple, but now you can get there. This is an eight-acre parcel. It's on the northeast corner of Maple Road and Beaumont Parkway. It has three. It has 300 feet of frontage on Maple and 1,100 feet of frontage on Beaumont. And there's 68,000 square feet of retail restaurant on the site. And based on the locations I noted, it serves as the gateway to the development to come up in this area. Next slide, please. We are seeking three variances on this site. One is to allow the off-premises signage, which I talked about a minute ago. The second is to add the gateway sign on the same frontage as the pylon sign. Your code requires them to be on separate frontages. As I noted, that gateway sign, which says the Boulevard, has no tenants on it. It just gets placed in front of the pylon sign. And the third is pole sign face area. We're adding a new pylon sign, so we need an increase in the pole area. Next size, please. Next slide. Just walking through what the signs are. This is an existing pylon sign that's located here. This is the new proposed sign located at the corner that leads into the development. And this is the gateway sign that wraps the corner. Those are the three signs on this property. Next slide, please. I will walk through, we don't believe there'll be any undesirable change. There is already an off-premises pylon on this site, the Catalyst Fitness. We are going to take that sign down. We're going to move them on to the new sign we're going to build. And so it'll be, there's two signs there now. There'll be two signs when we get done. The sign, this is a very busy area. As we know, Maple and Beaumont in that area is very busy. This will help identify and, and the access to the traveling public. And it's also consistent with the other signs in the area. And I'll go through that in a minute. As I noted, the gateway sign is just an attractive low sign with one word on it, the Boulevard. And the size of the proposed signage is consistent with other signs in this area. If, I did put in the package photos of other signs, Kyoto Restaurant, Wendy's, IHOP, Reed's, Jewelers, this is a commercial area, but this will be consistent signage. Next slide, please. I'm going to go through this slide once. It's consistent with all the applications. We cannot achieve the benefit without the variance relief, the benefit the applicants bringing the region, having appropriate signage to guide vehicles throughout the 165 acres, and having the necessary signs for new tenants. We can't get the, what we're requesting out of variance relief. Whether the variances are substantial, we don't believe they are. When you look at the size of the site and what we're proposing to do, these signs are consistent, even consistent with some of the other properties we've already developed. We do not believe they're substantial. There's not a negative impact on the physical environment conditions of the neighborhood. The signage is being proposed all within commercial retail development. There's no environmentally extensive land assignment, and the signage is consistent with the area. And we do acknowledge this hardship is self-created, but as a standalone, that doesn't justify a denial. Next slide. Any questions on that site from the board? I'm just going to ask as we go, so it's a long presentation. Next slide.
You are going to be removing the existing pylons?
Next, next site is what we call the Costco-Dick's House of Sports Site. It's highlighted in this area here. It's in purple on this site. As you can see, it is tied in through that road, through the development, through the new connection, and the two signalized areas. This is a 62-acre property. It's on the northeast corner of North Bailey Ave and Meyer Road. It has 2,600 square feet, 2,600 linear feet of frontage on North Bailey and 953 feet of linear frontage on Meyer. It's proposed to be improved with six buildings totaling about 522,000 square feet of retail office and warehouse. I would assume as we further develop that, there'll be restaurants and other things there in the future. The site is located at Romney Road and the new traffic signal, so you can come right off Niagara Falls Boulevard and come in this way, get to the site, come off Maple, get in this way, or come off Meyer. Next slide, please. We're asking for three, four variances here. Again, the off-premises pylon signage, pole sign face area, and I will talk about why that number is so large in a minute. Pylon height, 65 feet, I'll talk about that in a minute. And the total sign area, we're asking for about a 1,600 square foot increase of what we're allowed. Next slide, please. These are the signs that are going on the property. So we have one new pylon sign located across in the Boulevard Consumer Square at the signalized intersection, two small directional signs. And they're 10 feet high. They are internal at decision-making points in the traffic, so when you're coming up the road, it tells you which direction to go in. And then this is a 65-foot-high sign on the I-290. We are going to put Welcome to the Town of Amherst at the bottom. That takes up a significant portion of this sign. And then the tenants on the side and the Boulevard on the other side. This sign anchors the entire region. So when you come around the 290, you can see that coming both ways. I will walk through how that's consistent with some other signs in the area in a little bit. And we have some new wall signs right in front of the pylon sign, here and here. Next slide, please. As far as whether there'll be undesirable change, for the off-premises pylon signage that's having tenants on, we don't believe so. The property sits on North Bailey and the I-290. This signage is consistent and certainly going to help with wayfinding in the area, especially when we had the Costco and the Dick's. With respect to the pylon size located in the 290, 100, 1,800 square feet of that is dedicated to tenant panels. 478, 77.8 square feet is Welcome to Amherst, and 391 square feet is just the word the Boulevard. And the sign is consistent with other signs on the 190 and the 90 for large shopping regions like this. Next slide, please. And here's a few signs. This is the proposed sign, Howard Look on the 290 with Costco and Dick's behind it. This is the Cabela's sign. It's the same height. We have the sign LaSalle Center and the sign at Fashion Outlets. All of these three signs are consistent with that sign on a big highway system. And this sign really anchors in the 165 acres that we have. It's a unique addition to this site. Next slide, please. Going down undesirable change, the shopping center pylon size, as I noted, for the big sign, it's the same size as some of the other signs on the highway. The total sign area, the increase is directly related to that large sign. The initial area will not be out of place in the character of the area. It actually does not stand too high on the 290. As you can see, it's, it's relatively well-sized. It will contain six buildings. The property is a large property, and we think that it's consistent. Based on the overall square footage on the Trader Joe's Center, which is Boulevard Consumer, we have 9,949 square feet, so the additional square footage is not inconsistent with the area. Next slide, please. I'm going to skip this. These are the same reasons we went through before. Next project is matter seven, and that is 1550, 65 to 1703 Niagara Falls Boulevard. That is what we call Boulevard Consumer Square. Many of you are familiar with that. That's had a lot of new tenants recently, including a restaurant up at the front, LL Bean and some other tenants. It's on the northeast corner of Niagara Falls Boulevard and Romney Road. It's a 64-acre parcel. It has frontage on all four roadways, Romney, North Bailey, Bridely, and Niagara Falls Boulevard. It has about 720,000 square foot development of retail and restaurant space. In the future, we will be adding five new buildings to it. So we are adding, we're going to intensify that, which is one of the reasons we need the additional signed square footage. Next slide, please. On this site, we need seven variances. That's again for the off-premise signage, a setback for a gateway sign. I'll walk through that. We're going from 15 to 7. A setback for pylon 6, I'll walk through that. We're going from 15 to 12.7. The pole sign face area from 994 to 1968. The signage permitted in the Clear Vision Triangle, I'll walk through that. Setback of a gateway monument sign near Tim Hortons, I'll walk through that. And a total sign area from 10,096 to 11,074. So that's a 797 square foot increase. Next slide, please. So this has a lot of signage. There are four pylons located, three pylons located Niagara Falls Boulevard that already have variances. And they're located at the hard corner of Romney at the center of the site, and then over here up by Bridely. We are proposing an additional pylon at this driveway on Bridely. We are proposing Boulevard wall signs in front of every pylon sign where there is not already one. There's already one here. We're providing directional signs. We have seven of them located throughout the site. Those are the small 10-foot signs directing people around the area and to the other uses. So, and then we are proposing a new pylon sign at the intersection across from Costco and a new pylon sign at the other intersection across from Costco. Those are, those are all the signs for the property, again, consistent with the other signage. Next slide, please. Whether there'll be undesirable change, I don't believe there is. This is a fully commercially developed area. It's very busy. This site sits on four roads, so it's four road frontages. It's bounded to the east and south by property owned by Benderson, so we own almost all the abutting property on the site. The property has a direct connection to Costco and Dick's, and the navigation through the site can be confusing as it currently is without the new development we're putting in. So we hope, these signs to help better direct the customers. The gateway monument sign on Bridely Road is setback seven feet. So this is a blow-up of the diagram. You can see the seven feet. It only contains, it's a very low sign. It's not going to block any visibility, because from sitting here, people coming on this side of the road, you look left to see oncoming traffic. The sign's on the right, so it's not going to block any visibility. It doesn't block visibility across the street. It only contains one word, the Boulevard, and it's consistent with the other signs. Next slide, please. With respect to the pylon sign, P6, that has a 12.7 setback. It's located on the east side of the driveway. Will not, again, not block any visibility, because as people make a right and come down the road, they're going to be turning, looking this way, all the other traffics on the opposite side of the road, so they can see the traffic. And the signs consistent with the pylon signs, and we pushed it back as far as possible to the edge of the pavement here where the curb is. There is also additional land here, so while our property line ends, we have an additional three to four feet before you get to the roadway. The pole sign face area, that's for the additional signs being added throughout the site. Next slide, please. The pylon sign in the Clear Vision Triangle, that's detail five, right? The sign, again, does not block any visibility, so you can see here that the sign is pushed back to the edge. Again, cars pull up on this side of the road. You're not going to, it's not going to impact any visibility. We're happy to have traffic safety take a look at that and take a condition that if they don't approve it, we'll remove it. The sign is at a traffic signal which controls access, so people can't freely go. So even with the sign there, you just can't go. You're going to have a traffic signal. The gateway monument sign by Tim Hortons, that's set on our property line. There's nowhere else to put it to make it visible from the corner of Bridely and Niagara Falls Boulevard. And then the variance for total sign area is generated by the additional pole signs. Again, we don't believe that's out of character with the area. Next slide, please. We'll skip this one. Next slide, please. This is 1501 to 1551 Niagara Falls Boulevard. That's the property here we call the TJX property. It's improved, it's a 14-acre parcel located on the southeast corner of Niagara Falls Boulevard and Romney Road. It adds 877 feet of frontage on North Bailey and 717 linear feet of frontage on Niagara Falls Boulevard. It has three buildings totaling 205,000 square feet. It serves as the entranceway for the coming into Costco off of Niagara Falls Boulevard. It has two existing pylon signs already on it on Niagara Falls Boulevard. Next slide, please. We're asking for five variances. Again, the off-premise pylon signage, the gateway monument sign on the same side of the street, signage permitted in the Clear Vision Triangle, a setback of the gateway monument sign, these two go together, and the total sign area. Next slide, please. This is the area. We have two existing pylon signs here. We're going to add two wall signs in front of them. That's one of the variances. We're going to add a directional sign in this area. That's all the signs we're adding to this property. So we're using the two existing pylon signs that are already there. We're not adding any new pylon signs, just the two walls on either side and the, and the directional sign in this area. This tends to be a very busy intersection, and now people can go this way to Costco, across the way to a number of other uses. This is the 10-foot directional sign. Next slide, please. The off-premises pylon directional sign, again, is a very busy area. It sits on two roads. It's bounded to the east and north by property owned by Benderson. It has a direct connection to Costco and Dick's. Romney actually acts like almost a site driveway for Costco and Dick's, so people need to find their way back there, and it will help straighten out the confusing navigation. The Boulevard gateway sign is consistent, as we've talked about, and the Clear Vision Triangle. Based on the configuration of the road, the road is really bubbled out here. All right, so the road starts out here. Our sign is in the Clear Vision Triangle over here. It's not going to cause any impact. It's pushed outside the functional Clear Vision Triangle. But based on our property line, it's in the triangle. We can't move it due to a number of utility easements in the area. We can't reposition that. Next, next sign, please. The setback of the wall sign, again, in this area is two feet. It's a tight area, but based on the bump out of the road, which is almost 20 feet, it has more than a 20-foot setback from the road. So it says 15 feet from the curb line. The variance allows 622 additional square feet. It's not out of character of the area. There are three large commercial signs already on Niagara Falls Boulevard. This is going to be consistent. As I know, this is a large site, 14 acres with a lot of development. Next slide, please. We'll skip this one. Matter nine, which is my last one. This is 6,0064 North Bailey Ave. That's the area in purple. It sits on North Bailey and Romney. This is the location of our new office headquarters. Delta Sonic and Benderson are relocating their office headquarters to this site, and we're relocating all of Delta Sonic's manufacturing, retail, and warehousing, and research and development to this building in the back. So we're relocating our entire office, there's almost 500 employees, to this, this site. It is a 17-acre parcel. It's on the southwest corner of North Bailey Ave and Romney Road. Again, it's got frontage on both North Bailey and Romney. It's got about 278,000 square feet of office and warehouse. Next slide, please. Again, we've got four variances. The off, signage in the Clear Vision Triangle, setback of a gateway monument sign, setback of another gateway monument sign, and setback of a shared tenant sign. I'll walk through those in a minute. Next slide, please. So here are the signs we're adding. We're adding two low tenant signs, one here and one on the corner. We're adding wall signs right here on the hard corner. That's all the signage we're adding to this property. No big pylons on this, because this isn't a retail area. Next slide, please. Setbacks of the gateway and freestanding signs, both are located at a signalized intersection. Yep. I'm sorry, when I get close, I can't see as well. So this is the sign that was on the corner of Romney and North Bailey. You can see the wall sign right here and the tenant sign right here. That is a setback to the road. Both signs are located between a stormwater detention pond and the curb. The signs are at a signalized intersection, so when you pull up there, you're going to be stopped at a signal, so they're not going to block visibility. Again, these are also on the Clear Vision Triangle, but based on the fact that they, the road is, comes out a little, and based on the fact that there's a signal, they're not, also not going to block visibility, especially because cars will be coming on this side of the road, and you'll have a clear line of sight to the north. Next slide. This is the same slide we went over. This is the same. That is all the applications. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Could you explain what's the overall goal with this strategy for the Boulevard signage is?
The overall goal with this signage is to have a consistent look across 165 acres. It's to brand the site as a retail center in Amherst, including, so it can go on in perpetuity. That was the part of our goal in getting Costco there. We actually sold them that site. Typically, we don't sell, but they are a big anchor to the area. We're also looking to improve traffic flow. And some of those sites, they're already hard enough to know where you're going, right? And now we have, now you can get in from Maple. You've got Costco and Dick's up, up top, and we're going to be drawing a lot of people not from the area. So a lot of those directional signs or pylon signs with a Costco name on it are to get people into the site. So when you're on Maple, for example, and you're coming down Maple, and your GPS is getting you in this direction, there's a sign here telling you that if you want to get to Costco, you can go up this way, not all the way out to Niagara Falls Boulevard, which we know is generally a busier road. So we're trying to distribute traffic better. We're trying to have a consistent look. If you look at our shopping centers, well, everything else is consistent. We have consistent landscaping. We have consistent design. Now we're trying to have a consistent sign package. The Boulevard signs, the low gateway signs, they're for attractive reasons only. They don't advertise any tenants. We just want, we use them in Florida to, to kind of delineate the hard corners, so you can see you're entering the Boulevard Shopping District. Our goal is to have this go on in perpetuity as the shopping region in Amherst, and we want to label that area. I don't think there's any other developer in town that has 165 consistent acres all bound together on this, in the same area of town. So, I mean, we own both sides of public roads. I mean, Romney, for all intents and purposes, serves as a driveway into Costco at this point. We own everything on both sides of it. So, and there were discussions at time that we could not do it, but us taking over Romney, legally, you can't do that in New York State, but because we own everything around it. So if we had done that, this would be one big property. We wouldn't have, and that's how we treat them, right? We try and have everything consistent. So that's the goal of this. Improve traffic safety, improve the branding of the area, and generally make it safer. That's our goal.
If the board grants all the variances, how long do you think it'll take to change all these signs?
We'll, we'll change them over the next year. We're, we're doing a lot of construction. We're starting construction on this site now. That's where our new offices are going. We've got parking lot improvements. We've got building expansions. There's a lot going on there. We've got building expansions, a lot going on there. We're building the site right here. We're building a new restaurant out in front of here. So we've got the people on site during that construction over the next year. All those signs will be changed out and, and put in. We want, we'd like to do it all together while we have things torn up.
Is there any other questions for the applicant? Alright, so we're going to take public comment, one item at a time. Yeah, no, that's, I was getting to that. I was getting to that.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. So the first item is forty eighty to forty, forty one ten Maple Road. Is there any member of the audience here to speak on that item? Alright, we'll close the hearing on that item. Is there a motion on, on that item number five?
Motion to approve.
Motion by member Gergen. Second member Parker. All in favor say aye. Aye. Alright, that passes four zero. The next item under consideration is forty two twenty four to forty two fifty six Bridgely Road. So any item of the audience here to speak on that item? Alright, with that, we'll close the hearing on that. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by member Gergen. Is there a second? Second by member Parker. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes four zero. The next item is forty five sixty five to seventeen oh three Niagara Falls Boulevard. So any member of the audience here to speak on that item? Alright, we'll close the hearing on that. There was an amended resolution passed out that says, that adds a condition, the town traffic safety coordinator reviewing the signs falling within clear vision triangle. Is there a motion for approval with that condition?
Motion to approve with that condition.
Motion by member Gergen, is there a second? Second by member Parker. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes four zero with the condition. Next item number eight, that is fifteen oh one to fifteen fifty five Niagara Falls Boulevard. Is any member of the audience here to speak on that item? Alright, we'll close the hearing on that. There was a amendment, submit, there was a resolution submitted with an amendment given to each member. Again, that had the same condition that the town traffic safety coordinator reviewing the signs falling within clear vision triangle. Is there a motion for approval for number eights?
Motion to approve with the condition.
Motion by member Gergen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Parker. All in favor say aye. Aye. Alright, that passes four zero. And then number nine, that is six thousand to six thousand forty North Bailey Road. Is there any member of the audience here to speak on that item? Close the hearing on that. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by member Gergen, is there a second? Second by member Parker. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that passes four zero. Now we're to item number ten, that is thirteen fifty five Niagara Falls Boulevard.
I'm sorry, it's me again. This one should be shorter. Good evening, James Boglioli. I'm a attorney for Benderson Development and Delta Sonic, five seventy dollar Avenue, Buffalo, New York. This is a variance request for our Delta Sonic located on the corner of Maple Road and Niagara Falls Boulevard. It's on the northeast corner. We're looking to update the signage, make the signage consistent with the Delta Sonic brand, all the new signs we've been installing. This is an old site and consistent with the Delta Sonic located on thirty one hundred Niagara Falls Boulevard, which is to the north, which this zoning board did grant variances for, for that. And I will walk through that. Next slide, please. And there are currently three signs on this property. Two on Niagara Falls Boulevard, a pylon sign and a gas sign, and one on Maple back on the corner of the property. Next slide, please. Our goal is to remove those three signs and replace them with the same pole sign on each street. We're allowed a sign on each street. So this is the exact same.
Is that saying a dollar eighty three for gas?
You want to hold me to it? I should have looked at the numbers. Actually, that's how long ago we were thinking about this. So it's been a while. But this is the same signage that we are now installing at all our Delta Sonics. It is code compliant as far as height. It does require a size variance because we do add an additional panel at the bottom to have messaging on the bottom. We do have that on the other side. I'll show it to you in a minute. Next slide, please. So we need two variances to install a new, new pole signs. They're a hundred and eighty six point five six square feet each. They were permitted to have a hundred and twenty eight square feet. So that's about a sixty square foot variance. We're looking for a total sign area. We're proposing twelve hundred fifty seven square feet. We're a maximum at eight forty eight, we're allowed. We're already above that because the variances have been granted here. So the new, our new number is based on adding the additional pylons. We do go through the town law balancing test. I'll walk through that. I did talk about the benefits we're looking at, the consistent signs permitted in the surrounding zoning. It's consistent with the commercial uses in the area and it's consistent with the other Delta Sonics. Next slide, please. So whether an undesirable change will occur, this is our property. These two signs are consistent with the other signs in the area. Right next door, we have a twenty foot, twenty five foot high premier sign. That's located just adjacent to the site. Across the way, we have the Boulevard, which we are buying and will redevelop. We have a tall McDonald's sign located right next to the site. We have a large Raymour and Flanagan sign located at this site. We have two of these signs located on the property of the TJ Maxx. And we have three of these signs located on the Boulevard. So this, the two signs proposing for Delta are consistent with the other signs on both roads. This would not be out of character. Next slide, please. Also, the zoning board did grant a variance for the Delta Sonic on the former Menne Nursery. Here it is, it's a few miles north of this site. We did come in for a variance. The board did approve the exact same sign that we're showing here for that site. You also did grant a variance to allow thirteen hundred forty two square feet of total sign area. Again, we're about twelve ninety seven, so we're less than the prior variance. Delta Sonics are an interesting, what I do an interesting use because they have four or five individual uses, which is why we end up accumulating signage. A lot of that signage is directional on site. So if you go onto a Delta, you don't see the word Delta a lot, but you see a lot of signs saying car wash, detail, vacuums, all those add up. We have them on, on the site we're looking at. We have five independent uses. We have an oil change, we have an interior detail, we have exterior vacuums, we have an interior car wash, we have a convenience store. All those require signage. So it's much like a, a Delta is more like a shopping plaza than like a gas station. So which is why we tend to have a larger number. And the zoning board did recognize that when they granted this variances here. Again, that's consistent with the variance I'm asking for now. Next slide, please. We can achieve the benefit without the variances. As I know, I think this is a positive. We're going from three signs to two signs. The site is at the maximum signs permitted already. So the additional square footage is to add the signs. We cannot replace these signs without the variance. I don't think it's substantial. It's a twenty nine percent increase above what's allowed. Whether, even if you think that's substantial, the courts tell you to look at whether there's a harm being created. In this case, there's none. There's a number of different uses on the site, which is what I talked about. The variance will result in a decrease in the number of freestanding signs. And as I noted, it's consistent with all of those signs in the area. When you go down Niagara Falls Boulevard, this sign looks small compared to some of those signs in that area. The variance will not have an adverse physical impact or physical on the, an adverse factor impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood. This is an environmentally sensitive land and we're putting it where the other signs already existed. And whether the hardship is self-created, I will admit that it is. And as we talked about, that's not determinate. So that's the presentation.
So how much square footage of signage you need? So the resolution I'm seeing in front of me is thirteen fifty seven. I believe you said twelve something.
The total sign area we're proposing is twelve fifty seven. The thirteen fifty seven is off. Again, you should check, do you have the application? I'll give you my numbers.
Is that thirteen fifty seven on the application?
And we will go with thirteen fifty seven.
Just wanted to make sure. Any member of the board have a question for the applicant? Alright, Tina, is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Alright, we'll close the hearing for that item then. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by member Gergen, is there a second? Second by member Parker. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that passes four zero. Thank you. Ron Schubert? We'll, we'll give Ron a second. So number eleven on the agenda?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Matt Dubois with the law firm Block and Longo. I am here tonight on behalf of United Auto located at fifty one thirty nine Sheridan Drive, who is seeking two area variances. Next slide, please. This gives you an overview of the project location. It's between Evans Street and Mill Street on a Sheridan Drive. We could skip this one because I will be hitting these later in interest of time. Just to give you sort of an overview, this, the current owner obtained the property in twenty twenty and, and as he, in the subsequent years, he realized that he had inherited a bit, a few non-compliant items with this property. There was shed non-compliance as far as the building separation goes. And then there's inadequate landscaping, interior landscaping in the parking area. So, next slide, please. This is the current conditions of the site. As you can see, there's the current garage building located here. And then there is the parking lot around it. And it's a current gravel area which will be demolished as part of the project to bring the site into further compliance. Add two parking spots here and add a grassy area here. This is the shed in question, which is the subject of the shed building separation variance. Just to give you some more background for the, the site in general, there's been an auto shop here in some capacity since nineteen seventy nine, continuously for forty five years. The current owner, as I said, who purchased it in twenty twenty, he found out through conversations with the planning department that he had some non-compliance to deal with and bring into, into compliance, including a shed that had been on the site in its current location for about eighteen to twenty years. So in twenty twenty one, without knowing that the shed was non-compliant, he did replace that dilapidated shed that was there with a new shed built professionally with four by six construction on the same footprint, same size, same location. So that brings us to the two variances he would be requesting. As you may know, that the code requires thirty feet of building separation in this district between buildings on site. We currently have a twenty seven foot building separation on the east-west axis between the parts of the garage structure and the shed. But there is currently only six point three feet north-south between the, the building and the shed. So we would need to request a variance for that to persist where it is. The interior landscaped area as well, there's meant to be ten percent interior landscaping in the parking area. Currently, we can provide for only three percent to meet the required parking setbacks, drive aisle widths of twenty four feet and just the, the general site constraints and setbacks of the lot. Here's a satellite photo to give you a better idea of what we're dealing with. Here's the, as you can see, the almost thirty foot, you got almost twenty eight foot setback between the shed and the building there, but only the six point three feet here. And this is the parking lot area here. As you can see, there's some mature trees here that were installed as part of the previous nineteen eighties site plan approval. And there's also a mature tree line along here that buffers the, the area quite nicely. So turning to the actual factors for the, the building separation, I would first point out that this, there's been a shed in this spot for eighteen to twenty years as confirmed by the, the longtime employees of the, of the business. So a total of approximately twenty two to twenty four years, given the new shed that he built to replace the old shed in the same spot. It's been a longstanding condition that hasn't caused any complaints. And it's also a very commercial area. Adjacent to the west is Mighty Taco. Adjacent to the right is an animal hospital. And just to the right of the west, excuse me, the east of that is a Quick Fill. There's a McDonald's across the street. So it is quite a commercial character in the area as it is. If we go next slide. And just to give you that overview, we have the Mighty Taco, our business here, United Auto, or excuse me, Animal Hospital, Quick Fill and good buffering here. So we don't believe it would result in a negative change to the character to leave the shed where it is. Second factor is whether there are feasible alternatives. The shed is important to the business. It's been there for some time. It, it serves as storage for parts and tools and equipment that would, that wouldn't really fit honestly inside the garage itself. It also protects them from theft. There had been, previously been thefts at the site, so they lock up all their parts and equipment to prevent theft. And so it's, and moving the shed isn't really feasible either, given the setbacks, the rear twenty five foot setback, which is met more or less exactly, and the side setbacks. So there really are no feasible alternatives. Whether it's substantial, as you, as you know, substantiality is not just numerical or mathematical. It has to be judged in terms of the context and the actual impact it would have. So I mean, six point three feet versus thirty feet is a substantial difference. Then again, it is completely hidden behind this garage structure, screened from all properties nearby by mature vegetation or the building, the garage building itself. It's in a very commercial area. It's, it's just not visible and I don't believe it would cause any impact to maintain it where it is. So regarding the fourth factor, physical or environmental impacts, as you know, well, physically, it's, it's a better, it's an improvement over the previous shed that was there for the twenty years. It's better constructed, professionally built, and it hasn't caused any issues physically. Environmentally, there's no additional visual impacts compared to how it was for the last twenty years. And part of the overall plan, site plan, is to add extensive plantings and seven new trees, which was going to improve the general site. Also, as far as drainage goes, there haven't been any drainage issues identified. The fifth factor, whether the harm is self-created. Arguably, you could say that it's been here for some time and my client purchased the property on, without knowing that the existing conditions were non-compliant. So you could say it's not self-created. Even if it were, you, I, you know that that's, it's one of five factors. It's not determinative by itself and I think the other four do speak for themselves. So to weigh the benefits versus the detriment, as you know, it's important to his business storing his parts and equipment. It would avoid tearing down a, a building that's been longstanding in some form or another on that footprint and is essential to this business. He has put a substantial investment into this already, the improvements on the property and the site planning. And as for, as far as detriments go, none really have been identified that we are aware of of leaving a shed in its current location where it's been longstanding, where it's well-screened. That brings us to the second variance requested, which is the interior landscaping. So ten percent required within the parking area. We can provide for three percent, given the setbacks and the need for the number of parking lots that there are, traffic circulation of these large diesel pickup trucks that are serviced here. A variety of reasons why this is the max, three percent is the maximum that you can provide for. So as far as the character goes, I think if you look at the nearby sites that we've looked at previously, you know, you have Mighty Taco, you have large parking lots in the area, which aren't, aren't really broken up at all by any kind of landscaping within the interior landscaped area. So this is really not out of character for the businesses right around it. Also, the landscaping that is going to be added as part of the overall plan really offsets the lack of the interior landscaping, the seven new mature trees that will grow and mature in this, where they, and the three on the front, you know, three frontage trees and additional west side tree and east side plantings as well, as well as a number of shrub plantings lower to screen the adjacent businesses on the west and east. There will also be a destruction of the eight hundred and ten feet of gravel parking that exists, which partially will be replaced with lawn. So all in all, I think between, oh, and I haven't mentioned the, the right of way island. There's the front island along the frontage, which cannot be counted, even though it would otherwise. even though it would otherwise technically be considered interior landscaping, given where it's located. But because it is in the right-of-way, technically, on the property line, it is not countable. But it is there, it is sort of accomplishing the same feature as it is within the parking area and right-of-way. Whether there are feasible alternatives, they do need the requested amount of parking that they have asked for in the site plan to serve their business, to park vehicles, customer vehicles, vehicles that are being worked on, tow trucks coming in and out to bring in vehicles. There really is no ability to add more interior landscaping with the very limited depth of the site that they have and the setbacks that are required. As far as substantiality goes, 3% versus 10% is a difference of 7%. It's not insignificant. But as I've touched upon, the extensive landscaping that will be done around the perimeter of the property, the new trees, the new shrub plantings, the addition of additional grass, green space, is going to offset that, and it's going to improve the site from the way it is now and has been for decades. Here's the landscape plan as submitted to the planning department. As you can see, an additional tree here, in addition to these existing mature trees on the west side, shrub plantings, frontage trees, trees on the east side screening from the animal hospital, as well as hedges and new grassy area down in the southwest corner. Just to give you example of the character of the neighborhood, this is a couple doors down, just to the east of the animal hospital, which is next door. This is the Quick Fill. You can see that there is very little of any kind of interior landscaping to speak of, certainly less than 10%, I would say. It's not out of keeping with that. On the west side neighbor is Mighty Taco. You can see that there is a bit of interior plant, landscaping here, but there is no frontage landscaping or side screening shrubs that we will be adding. So I think all in all, it will be rather in keeping with the neighborhood, and it will certainly not look any, you know, it will look similar to its neighbors or better. The fourth factor, physical or environmental impacts. I think physically and environmentally, it's going to improve as we're adding new green space, new trees, new shrubs. That's going to add shade, infiltration for stormwater. All in all, it's going to be a physical and environmental improvement. As far as the self-created harm, again, he did inherit some, this site in its existing form when he purchased it in 2020 without realizing it had been non-compliant for decades. And now he's taking steps to bring it into compliance. You could argue it's not self-created in that sense, but even if it were, that is not the sole determinative factor. So all in all, the benefit would adequate parking and traffic circulation for tow trucks and customer vehicles is important to this business. It allows him to maintain his business as it is, in continuity, and allows him to improve the physical character and landscaping of his property. The detriments, I think, the 7% shortfall from what is required is, it's not ideal, but it is offset largely by the landscaping that will be provided. And I think we've touched upon this enough. Just in comparison, we've already looked at the Quick Fill, Georgetown Animal Clinic next door. Similar to its other neighbors, is, there's very little interior landscaping, no frontage plantings or mature trees in the frontage that we will be adding. So all in all, I think there's maybe an improvement over some of the surroundings. Believe that's all I have. And we've touched on this enough. I won't beat a dead horse anymore.
Alright, thank you. Does anybody have, any member of the board have a question for the applicant?
The new trees on Sheridan, are those on the property or in the right-of-way?
Let's look at the landscape plan. My understanding is they are on the property. Yes, I can clarify that, but I believe that they are on the property.
Any other questions? Alright, is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Any member of the board like to make a motion?
Move to approve both area variances.
Motion by member Schubert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Phillips. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you all. The next item on tonight's agenda is 8840 Transit Road. The applicant, please come to the podium. Please say your name and address into the microphone before starting.
Hi, my name is Ryan Kylie. I'm with Flex Loom Sign Company at One Albright Court in La Cuenca, New York. So we're here requesting an area variance for an additional amount of signage here. There are two proposed signs. The one by the road is replacing more kind of outdated post and panel sign there. There is, it does look a little different right now because there's a new owner. And then the other one is on the side of the building itself. For that one, it's covering up a passive gable vent. There have been discussions making sure that it's mounted properly to give enough space for airflow so that doesn't cause any issues with that. Getting into the criteria here for the character of the neighborhood, it's been designed to fit in with the character of the neighborhood. Their next parcel to the south has a similar ground sign with a lot of stone on it. That's what they were trying to replicate. If you look on the other side of the street, that's Clarence on Amherst. It's a lot more commercial-looking signs. This is more, you know, it's the part of Amherst where it's not as busy yet on transit. So they're trying to keep it a little more low-key, keeping like earth tones on everything so it doesn't stand out too much while also still getting the attention that it needs. In terms of the alternatives, the building itself has relatively small frontage and it's set back about 100 feet from the road. So it's already hard to see. Right now, the current signage is 32 square feet, which is close to the allowable, and they already have issues with people driving by and not noticing it because there's really not much going on on that side of Transit Road there is the main issue. In terms of it being substantial, mathematically, yes, it is. But when you get down to it with the way that the square footage is being calculated, it counts the whole structure by the road on the ground sign. If you look at just the lettering and the logos, draw rectangles around them, it only works out to just under 30 square feet total. Right there, where it has a 53, that counts the whole sign itself. It's designed to be a color where it kind of blends into the background, but still lets it stand off. In terms of physical and environmental conditions, really, we're looking to improve the environmental conditions by improving flow of traffic. You know, that's one of the main things about the signs is to make sure people know where they're going. With the traffic on transit, if you miss it, it's going to be hard to turn around, slamming on the brakes if there's a lot of traffic is not a good thing. So we're looking to make sure everyone can see where they're going and make sure it looks good also. In terms of being self-created, you know, they purchased this building when they took over the dental practice. And, you know, they're kind of dealing with what they have there in the zoning code in terms of what's allowed. So that, to those points, do you guys have any questions?
Alright. Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, are any of these signs going to be illuminated?
Yes, the sign at the road is going to be illuminated. The plan, I want to double-check before I misspeak. Yeah, so they're going to be facelit.
Is any other questions for the applicant? Alright, is any member of the board here to speak on the, any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Come to the podium.
Good evening. My name's Scott Filly. I'm with North American Dental Group. Scott Filly from North American Dental Group, representing W &amp; Dental Care. Just wanted to thank the board for the time. The dental practice is thrilled to be in the area. We feel as though the design and the balance with the local business, this sign has been put together for color and design technique. And the main objective is to improve the public safety on the busy Transit Road and to identify the new business. Thank you once again.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here to speak on this item? Alright, we'll close the hearing. Would any member of the board like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by member Phillips, is there a second? Second by member Gergen. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, passes 5-0. Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is a special use permit for 20 Berryman Drive. Would the applicant please come to the podium?
Hello. My name's Tom Seoka. I live at 20 Berryman Drive. I'm seeking a special use permit to convert 535 square feet of my basement into livable space for an accessory dwelling. The dwelling will have a shared utility room. It'll have a shared rear entrance, and we will be adding two egress windows.
Who is the accessory dwell at unit four?
It is going to be for my father.
And it has windows in the, you're putting windows in?
It'll have, it's going to have two egress windows added.
Any member of the board have a question for the applicants? Alright. Is there any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Alright, we'll close the hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Member, motion by member Phillips, second by member Parker. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, passes 5-0. Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is item 14, 2080 Getzville Road. The applicant, please come to the podium.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dave Sutton from Sutton Architecture, here today to present the request for the area variance consisting of a side yard setback at 280 Getzville Road. We are proposing to be within three feet of the property line, and the current code requires a five-foot minimum setback. We actually presented this project to you a couple months ago, and at that time, the project was much different, was actually a two-story addition to the house. And we were asking for the same three-foot setback. At that time, the neighbor directly to the south expressed some concerns, not about the setback variance, but about the fact that we were doing a two-story addition. And it's not characteristic of the neighborhood. There's a bunch of ranches in the neighborhood. That's the proposal that we originally came to in front of this board for. And we took the comments from the neighbor to heart, and we actually redesigned the addition and are eliminating the second floor addition altogether. We knew we weren't going for a variance for the second floor addition that was allowed by code. But based on the neighbor's concerns and reevaluating the project, we went back to the drawing board and actually proposed just a redo of a garage. The current garage is almost in the exact same place. You can see with the photo as indicated on the screen. But it's a flat roof, poorly made, no foundation, has to be rebuilt. In order to rebuild it, we want to make it an actual two-car garage with a single 16-foot door. In order to do that, we need to request this variance. And we have redesigned this project to a single story out of respect to the neighbor and their concerns. And we feel as though it's a viable project, respecting the neighborhood and the surrounding. We know that it needs to meet the five criteria. One, the first of which is whether it has a negative impact on the neighborhood. We feel as though the new design is actually in concert or out of respect to the neighbor, so it will not have a negative impact. Alternative methods, we cannot comply with the actual standards and still achieve the desired effect of the two-car garage. And there's no really other method based on the limitation that the lot provides. Is the variance significant? In the neighborhood, there are several projects and properties that actually are within that five-foot setback and are existing non-conforming. So it's really compatible to the neighborhood. We are taking this to the next step. We're introducing the required New York State fire rating that will be associated with it for all fire code purposes. And we feel as if what we're presenting is definitely not significant, and it won't have an effect on the physical environmental impact within the neighborhood or surrounding properties. Fifth item is itself created. In a way, it is self-created. It's not in the fact that we are rebuilding a garage that my client didn't realize was in such poor condition, and he's forced to rebuild this garage in its place. So it's not really going to change anything. It's not created by him, but we are creating it in that we are asking for this variance, yes, to replace that garage. So we know that's a balancing test of whether there is a benefit to the applicant, which we can clearly see the benefit, and we don't believe there's any real negative effect for our proposal this evening. So with that, I respectfully ask for an approval for a setback requirement to be within three feet of the property line.
So the standard is five feet, and you're asking for three feet.
Correct.
Could, could I see, explain why you need to go within the five feet? It's for a two-car garage?
Correct. Yeah, so in order to get two cars, right now, it's, there's two garage doors. If you can show the photograph, there's two garage doors, but both doors are too small to even fit a car in. And we also, current code now requires us to have more structural integrity. This was maybe even a lean-to at one point in time that was enclosed. So it really compromises structural integrity. In order to do this and do it properly, we have to have adequate structure on both sides, having a 16-foot door, and that requires a slight infringement on that five-foot setback.
Is, how many feet is it setback from the property line currently? Is it five feet or is it more than five feet?
Yeah, I believe-
How much further out is this going out than what it is, what's there now?
The current setback is five foot, just over five foot. So it's just in compliance, and we are requiring, requesting to extend two foot into the side yard setback.
More than what's there currently?
Correct.
Any member of the board have a question for the applicant? Any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Alright, we'll close the hearing then. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by member Schubert?
Second.
Second by member Phillips. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Alright, the next item on tonight's agenda was the 21, 21 Ford Street Drive. I believe we wanted to adjourn that for tonight and have it come back at a later meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn that item?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by member Schubert?
Second.
Second by member Phillips. All in favor say aye. Leaving it open. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that item is adjourned 5-0. And then the last item on tonight's agenda is 330 Maple Road. The applicant, please come to the podium.
Good evening. Brian McGrath, 4225 Genesee Street, Buffalo. Thank you for putting this on your agenda and staying for forever here. Really appreciate that. It's a great project. I think you'll like it. Go ahead, next slide. So we've put together a great team. My partner, Mark Feinberg, is an orthopedic sports medicine surgeon. Myself, Justin Feinberg, who is our chief financial officer, Madeline Chow, who's basically our chief administrative officer. When you talk about deep and strong roots in the community, I was adding it up today. We're over 150 years living in Buffalo between us, and two of them are kids. So, and I realize that Mark and I are not. But we've been here for a long time. We've been orthopedic surgeons, Mark and I, just about 70 years cumulatively as well. Go ahead. So our project is transforming the old gun club into something we can use in staying within the town's desire to develop a health- within the town's desire to develop a health and recreation zone within this region of Amherst. We're creating a world-class multi-sport campus. It's two state-of-the-art, you know, climate-controlled domes representing about 350,000 total square feet, approximately 50,000 square feet of multi-use within a, basically a pre-construction building. And this is really a once-in-a-generation and if we can't get it done, I don't think it'll ever be done, so, and that would be a shame. Go ahead. Where, why? It's centrally located in Amherst. It's a great location, as you all know, relative to our Canadian friends, people to the east, the west, and the south. It's also right in the heart of what is currently a sports and recreation environment with the University of Buffalo there, the North Towns hockey rink, you know, softball, baseball, and the golf course. It is being built on remediated land. This is all toxic land that has been reclaimed in 2012 that you're all aware of. Go ahead. We're doing a world-class year-round sports destination. You know, Western New York lacks this type of event. We don't have anything that can actually do full-scale sports events within our region to do that for either a full track meet or for even full indoor, you know, soccer, football. We don't have adequate space or height to make that happen. This is something for everyone. It is not just a sports venue, it is a venue for exercise for all. And this closes a gap in what currently exists out there. It's developed by Mark and I and a whole legion of people and some of them are still here, having some, we have to leave just so they have to get to bed before they go to work tomorrow. And it's built based on our safety protocols that we have developed, working both at the NFL, NHL, and all the college sports around here. There's gonna be grounded and CPR training, ACL injury prevention programs, and all based on evidence-based medicine. We want to make this the safest place in the United States to practice, play sports, and exercise. Go ahead. So why do we need what we're talking about? Why do we need the height that we're asking you for? And that is primarily because of the track. We're putting a 200-meter bank track and then we want to have the sprinting lanes outside of the track. Currently, in most venues, those sprinting lanes are actually in the center of that oval, which requires deceleration paths at the end, so the athletes literally need to crash into them. So to make it actually safer and a better venue and make this a destination, we need to move those lanes outside of the track. Additionally, we have the entire other side of this, which is indoor soccer pitch, which you can play softball, baseball, soccer, lacrosse, every sport imaginable. It can be full field and there's bleachers to watch the sports as well with excellent viewpoints. There's also indoor basketball, volleyball, and pickleball within here and a sports enhancement and sports performance enhancement facility, which is about 9,000 square feet of the building. And then the center of 50,000 square feet is basically multi-use concessions, some retail space within there, and a wellness center. Go ahead. So this is really a new standard in health and fitness within Western New York. Regular physical exercise, as you all know, reduces people's blood sugar, reduces, you know, seasonal depression disorder. It basically, exercise on a regular basis improves the length of your life and the quality of your life. This actually is a, not just a sports complex, but something for the entire community. You know, it's being developed by Mark and I and our strong sports medicine, you know, contingent within Western New York, spreading across not just our orthopedic group at University Orthopedics and Sports Medicine, but all orthopedic groups and musculoskeletal care providers in Western New York. Our staff will be trained in CPR and AED. We'll be training people that come in there, which we're already doing. We've trained over 30,000 people since Damar Hamlin's, you know, event. And that goes ongoing every single week by our outreach programs. It's going to be an integrated wellness, you know, center with nutrition, recovery, and therapy experts for, including psychology and psychiatry to help people get back to their sport. Go ahead. You know, this is what, basically what I just showed you in written form with the 200-meter banked indoor track, which does not exist anywhere until you get down to either Penn State or down Ocean Breeze in New York City. Go ahead. And this is the problem. There is an indoor track currently, it's at Houghton College. From us to there is an hour and a half. Many of our athletes, after talking to all the local high schools, simply can't go there because they don't, they can't afford the buses to take the kids down there. And certainly nowhere north of Amherst is going to Houghton College for all of their kids to be able to actually participate in track, which is a very popular, you know, endeavor at this point in time. So this is, this is one of the great things about this facility, that we actually can do something that doesn't currently exist within Western New York and add on all the other things that we've just talked about. Go ahead. So with that, I'll leave it to Sean, tell you what we need.
So good evening, once again, Sean Hopkins, on behalf of the applicant. Do you have support letters?
Thank you.
I would note that first letter is signed by approximately 100 individuals. So we're now gonna get into why are we here this evening? And as I proceed, do feel free to ask any questions. I do want to note, so the original, the property at 330 Maple Road was originally approved, and some of you know this, in 2008 as what was called the Gun Club Project. It was a very large mixed-use project. And at that time, while I was not the attorney, I was here for many of those meetings and there was a ton of opposition. Ultimately, it was approved by the town, but not without numerous meetings, a lot of consternation, lawsuits, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, I think because of the 2008 economic meltdown, that never proceeded, so this site has been sitting vacant since then. The site is properly zoned. Most of the site is owned general business and there is a strip along Maple Road that zoned recreation conservation. The important aspect of that is that will be green space. So that will consist of landscaping to be protected by a permanent declaration of restriction. So rest assured, that area will be undeveloped. We also will be providing, subject to Erie County approval, a signalized intersection on Maple Road, along with a gated emergency access driveway connection on the western portion of the site. The two domes themselves are approximately 137,500 square feet in size. We're showing 524 parking spaces. The original plans that we submitted did also include a five-story hotel. At this point in time, we have moved that from the project plans in order to increase the number of parking spaces. That may get revisited in the future. I also want to note that Jay Monin from LaBella is here, who's prepared a lot of these visual simulations and code analysis. Does he have any questions? So this is to show you again, the 100-foot conservation area along the frontage, rendering of what this will look like. Originally, this was what I would say the more traditional bright white fabric that you associate with athletic domes. The town asked us to modify that to a premium gray and silver exterior finish, which does cost money, so we've made that change to avoid that stark appearance in that area. And as Dr. McGrath indicated, this actually was a contaminated brown field. It has been cleaned up. However, the tax credits themselves, which are an important component of this project, will burn off in the near future, so we need to get started as soon as we can. Next slide. This project will have tremendous financial impacts over the course of time, not only in terms of property taxes, but more importantly, in terms of job creation, both permanent and construction, and then just all the spin-off benefits that result from people visiting this site on a year-round basis. And there is a report that actually demonstrates those substantial economic impacts. Next slide. We do want to note that the building itself is permitted by the code. We'll have further discussions with the building department in terms of the height. We'll talk about the height in a minute. Next slide. So why are we here? What are the variances that we're seeking? We're seeking three variances as follows. Number one, the height of the proposed athletic facility exceeds the maximum height. The zoning code GB allows a maximum height of 65 feet, whereas to the peak, and the key word being peak, we're at 85 feet. Secondly, if you look at the allowable building materials in the zoning code for general business, it does not allow us to use the fabric dome that we're proposing. It's just not, it's not an expressly permitted material. And then in addition, and you're familiar with this, GB requires us to have windows so we avoid these giant blank walls. And of course, you can just picture an athletic dome, it'd be impossible to have windows. Next slide. These are the relevant provisions that specify the materials. My take on this might be a little bit different than everyone else. I think when the zoning code was written, it just didn't contemplate this type of project. Again, this type of project doesn't exist in the town of Amherst. It's different than your typical commercial residential project. And as such, I think that's why we need those two variances, in terms of the building materials and not complying with the blank wall requirements. Next slide. So in terms of the height, the mean height, this is important, the mean height of this buildings, the domes, are 42 feet six inches. So actually, almost 20 feet than what the maximum height that we're proposing of 85 feet. Really, why do we need to extend to that height? There's two reasons. Number one, we all know where we live, Western New York. We need that to provide the required snow melt system. Think about it. You have to have a curved structure so that the snow doesn't just sit on top and result in there being problems. And second of all, functionality. So to really provide the diverse range of sports that we want to provide here and provide those at the highest level, we need that height for functionality. We were doing some research yesterday, for example, a proficient punter, non-NFL punter, can punt a football to approximately 80 to 85 feet. So we'll be able to, you know, accommodate sports at the highest level that can't be accommodated in any other facility in Western New York. Next slide. We did some analysis just to see, are there other athletic domes, you know, in the east that, or that have heights more than 65 feet? There are. There's a ton of them. This is not meant to be precedent-setting. This is simply meant to be illustrative to show you it's not uncommon. That also does include the Brighton Park Golf Dome in Tonawanda that has a height of 80 feet. I think we've all probably driven by that numerous, numerous times. Next slide. And these are just some representative images. Greg, you can go through quick. That's the paddock. That's in Utica. Next. That's in Verona, New York. Next. Hofstra University. Mount Vernon, New York. Queensberry, New York. Triton Falls, New Jersey. Not gonna say it, New Jersey. That's at Rutgers, by the way. And then Spencerport, New York. Next. And then I think that's finally Danbury, Connecticut. I want to make sure those particular facilities aren't distinguishable from this project. This will be an integrated facility, whereas you can see those were kind of standalone athletic domes. These will be far different and far more beneficial because again, as Dr. McGrath indicated, we're taking a broad view of sports, health, wellness, et cetera, et cetera, whereas those are just really kind of standalone athletic facilities. These are the elevation plans prepared by LaBella. You can see two domes and then that connecting building with the size of approximately 50,000 square feet. Originally, we were at 100 feet. When we met with the town, very quickly, we got some feedback saying, can you do something to reduce that height? We went back to the design team, we went back to the manufacturer, and after a series of discussions, we came back with 85 feet. 85 feet is the minimum we need, again, for functionality, cost, snow requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So this shows the updated elevation with a peak height of 80 feet, 85 feet, but a mean height of considerably less. Next slide. These are some visual simulations the planning department asked for. And again, we have that 101-foot wide conservation area. There will be intensive landscaping planted therein and over time, that will provide a visual buffer. And that conservation area has been contemplated for this site for the last 17 years. Next slide. We also were asked to provide some visual simulations of different views along Maple Road. It's a little bit different, difficult to see, but this is looking to the east. You can see it's over here. What's there today? Or actually, what we're proposing, what's there today? Next. View two, and again, currently vacant. This is what it would look like traveling on Maple Road. This is again, heading east. Next slide. This is the view from the town's golf course highway department building, which is located here. Again, you can see it in the background. Next. So this is governed by the balancing test and the five criteria set forth in New York State Town Law, section 267 B3B. And here, perhaps more than any project that I've come in front of this board in the past nearly three decades, the benefits of the granting of the requested relief clearly are substantial. This project absolutely cannot go forward in the absence of the requested relief for numerous reasons. On the other hand, given that the effort we've made to provide landscaping, change the material of the athletic domes, modify the location so it's back 330 feet from Maple Road, I don't think there are substantial detriments. Could it be viewed as there being any detriments? I guess so, but I don't think they're substantial and they don't even come close to outweighing the benefits that will be realized. Next slide. Five criteria, whether granting the requested relief will result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. We think the answer to that is no. Again, the 101-foot wide conservation area along Maple Road, the substantial landscaping that we'll be planting per the town's landscape requirements, the fact that we've updated the material for the domes from what was originally proposed, and the fact, most importantly perhaps, that we've pushed these back as far as we can from Maple Road. So the closest portion of the domes will be 330 feet back from the edge of Maple Road. There are single-family homes and two-family homes across the street. They'll be approximately 450 feet or 430 feet from the structures. Next. Criteria number two, whether the benefits we're seeking can be achieved by some other method without the need for an area variance while still allowing us to receive the benefits? And the answer to that is no. Again, we have to have 85 feet. There's no way for this structure to be built than anything other than the material we're proposing. And of course, given the nature of the buildings, it would be impossible to have windows and comply, be in compliance with the blank wall requirements. Next. This is important. So we did evaluate options. We evaluated a couple of options. Number one, what would happen if we built a metal structure? However, the metal structure would only have a height of 35 feet. So it could accommodate some sports, it certainly couldn't accommodate the wide range of sports that we're proposing. That was quoted at $177 a square foot plus a large amount of soft costs. It quickly adds up to over $80 million, which is dramatically more than the entire budget for the project. The budget is approx, Justin, what's the budget? Budget is approximately $50 million. And then we also took another look at another model, which was basically a metal structure along with a dome. And that's the third bullet point, and that came in, believe it or not, at 100 million. At those numbers, and keep in mind, most of the time, these types of projects are paid for by the community or community-sponsored. This is being paid for privately. We will be going to the IDA, but this is a private for-profit venture, one that's being undertaken by Dr. McGrath and Dr. Feinberg, despite the fact they have numerous investment opportunities. They're choosing not just to maximize their financial return, they're choosing to give back to the community. This is a very important project and they've spent a great deal of time. So there is no way that we can make this project work from a financial perspective by itself if we complied with the code. And if we even did, in terms of a metal structure or some other type of structure, it still is not gonna accommodate what we're proposing do in terms of functionality. Next slide. Whether requested, oh, and then in addition, I think I covered, yeah, that's close to the before. Next slide. Whether requested area variances are substantial, and the key here is whether any harm will result. It's our position, there will not be substantial harm. We are 20 feet over to the peak of the domes, but again, behind 101-foot conservation area, 330 feet back, upgraded materials, et cetera, et cetera. It's also important to note that if you actually look at the comprehensive plan, this is the type of use that designates as being appropriate, commercial, and mixed use. Next slide. And that's showing the comprehensive plan. And again, we're compliant in terms of not only zoning, but the use that's designated in that comprehensive plan. And that's been designated as appropriate for this site for nearly 20 years. Next slide. Whether the granting the requested area variances will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. As you'll recall, last month, you concurred with the town board's request to be the designated lead agency pursuant to seeker. During its meeting last Monday, the town board did issue a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quarter Review Act, meaning they have determined that the project will not result in any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. We've also provided this board, as well as the planning board and the town board, with very extensive documentation, engineered plans, reports, and studies. very extensive documentation, engineered plans, reports and studies demonstrating there will not be substantial adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions. And then finally, we'll be in front of the planning board on Thursday for site plan approval. As part of that process, and this is important, the fully engineered plans and all technical documentation will need to be reviewed and approved, meaning drainage, sewer, lighting, et cetera, et cetera. All needs to be approved. And then finally. Next slide. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, we have knowledge of the zoning code, meaning we know the site is GB. As you know, that cannot be the sole criteria for your decision-making. And I would come back to one of the points I made earlier. I really think this is due to the unique nature of this project, a use that was not contemplated in the zoning code, a use that does not currently exist in the town of Amherst, and a project that really will result in substantial benefits for decades to come for all involved stakeholders. So with all that being said, we would ask you grant the requested relief. And if there are any questions, any members of the project team would welcome the opportunity to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I, you mentioned earlier that there was a hotel originally envisioned for this project, but that is not part of this request at this time. Is there any timeline when that would be expected to begin work on or when you're considering it in the future?
So we need to make sure we have some additional parking spaces. The goal would still be to have a hotel at some point in the future. However, and this has been made quite clear in connection with the required approvals, if and when that occurs, that will come in front of the town for a separate review process, a separate environmental review, site plan review, any variances needed from this board, et cetera, et cetera. So we don't know about the timeframe. We're definitely still interested. We think that really is an important component of the project, meaning, hey, people are coming here for the entire weekend, wherever they're coming, and they could be coming from a long way away. To have that ability to have hotel accommodations on-site would be important. But more important from this perspective is we need to get this project going. So we have removed the hotel for now.
All right. So, you know, from my perspective, the only people I'm super concerned about in, who might have criticisms for this project are the neighbors along Maple who suddenly live across, four, four hundred feet across the street from a, a large, large dome. So I would just encourage the, the development team to take their needs into consideration if moving forward with a hotel project in the future, if this is successful today. So.
And, and we will do that. I do want to note, there may be some residents here this evening. In connection with a couple of the previous public hearings, there have been two residents from the opposite side of Maple Road. One expressed their clear support and preference compared to the original gun club. The other one did have some concerns and both of them I've shared project information with. So we'll continue those discussions to the extent needed.
Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant?
Yes. Do you, can you go down to the slide with the fields?
Sure. It's up a bit.
Okay. Might be the other way. In any event, the, the softball fields, the baseball fields, what's the intention there? To leave them or to absorb them into this project?
Oh, no. So those are not part of the project site. So the project site is here. The existing athletic fields, they are not being purchased and they are retained, being retained by the town.
All right.
Softball fields. We actually did update our plans based on input received to show a pedestrian connection. And the town board did impose a condition requiring us to the extent this project, which we don't believe it will, creates any problems for those facilities that will work with them. And we were okay with that.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Great. Any member of the audience here to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name's Kevin McCormick. I live at twenty-seven Fox Chase Court in East Amherst. I am here on behalf of the Amherst Soccer Association, where I am a board, a member of the board, as well as a parent of two players and a coach. And we're just here to express our excitement and support over this project. We have the pleasure of working with hundreds, if not thousands, of kids and families throughout the year. The heart of our travel season is from November through the spring. Indoor space is almost impossible to come by. So a project of this magnitude, I think is something that the community should be fairly excited about and proud of. We would love to see this get done for our community and thanks for consideration. And also thank you to the project team for coming up with such an ambitious project in something that truly is a game changer for our community. Thank you.
Hello. Justin Craddock, eleven Lancelot Court, Getzville. I'm a coach at Williamsville North from track and field. I'm also the Section Six representative for all of indoor track as well as people over there. Western New York has been at a disadvantage at track and field since I competed in high school twenty years ago. We used to have to compete at Fredonia, Buff State. These tracks are dilapidated. They're not updated. Our kids don't get the chance to run fast. Houghton, they build Houghton. Houghton's a beautiful facility, but ninety minutes away. December alone, we're going there three times. It's three hours every Saturday. We have coaches all over here. They're traveling from Lockport to get there. It's even further, probably two, two hours, two fifteen for you guys sometimes. Just having a centralized location to help our athletes continue to grow, also for us to continue planning, me and Jason, to keep growing our sport, to have two facilities to work with. It's just going to be huge for our athletes if, I, I mean, the buzz all over Western New York, even the state, hearing the possibility for a banked track. Those tracks don't exist in the country. There, there's only a few of them. They're fast. They bring a lot of buzz. You know, coaches all over Western New York are quitting because of the long weekends. Athletes don't want to go to an eight-hour track meet or a, even longer sometimes. I've been to eleven-hour track meets on a Saturday with, with travel time. It's just going to help our sport grow. So if, you know, the, what you guys consider, just, you know, there's a lot of people behind this that are really hoping that we have something local that can continue to, to grow a sport that sometimes isn't considered popular. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here to speak on this item?
Good evening. Robert Fox, owner-operator Runners Roost locally in Orchard Park in East Amherst. Colden New York resident. My kids actually go to Springville District and go on, on behalf of soccer. In addition, to the running, I can speak like that soccer is a disadvantage as well locally. There's not enough turf space for the kids. I've learned we're practicing for U fourteen boys in, in a small Colden gym class, or gym just to be able to get practicing. And when you go play in these indoor facilities, you're talking about the height of the ceiling. The kids can't even punt, the goalkeeper can't even punt the ball correctly. They have to drop kick it, I believe, because it hits the lights or the ceiling. So there's a lot of benefits that, looking at this variance, having the correct heights. As far as the track and field, I do hear coaches often talk about in store, I think it's one, one AM, two PM or two AM in the morning sometimes you guys come back, battling the winter elements, kids on buses. But I think it's a real benefit just for the safety, the whole perspective of just not, not running, but multiple sports. And I'm, I'm very excited about it as well, so.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name's Jason Bibble. I live at two thirty-one Walton Drive. I am the head track and field coach at Amherst High School for both indoor and outdoor track. And I also get the honor and privilege of serving all of Section Six as the boys indoor track and field chairperson, which serves approximately two thousand student athletes throughout Western New York. I guess one point I would like to make is that I have never met an indoor track coach or an outdoor track coach that has said that if they won the Powerball or the Mega Millions that they would not spend those winnings on building a facility like this. This is something that has been a dream of anyone that's been involved in the sport of track and field. And the best part is, is we have basically our knights in shining armor showing up and proposing to build a facility like this, world-class facility in our backyards, being able utilized by all different types of athletes and residents, improving their health, improving their fitness. And alls we need to do is grant these variances so that we can do it the right way. If we're going to do it, we have to do it the right way. If we don't do it this way, we can't do it. So please, consider this variance and all of them and move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right. With that, I will close the hearing. I will mention that we had the planning department put together a findings of facts. I hope every member of the board has had a chance to read that. Does any member of the board have any corrections for the findings of facts? All right. Would any member of the board like to make a motion on this request? Motion by member Gergen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds.
Mr. Chairman, there are three suggested conditions. I want the, the motion, person who's motioned to acknowledge those if he or she wishes to honor those conditions.
All right. So we'll, we'll review the three conditions that have been requested by the planning departments. The first is inflatable athletic facility buildings shall not incorporate any graphic designs, trademark or any other form of signage on the exterior of the fabric domes. The second is inflatable athletic facility buildings shall not incorporate any exterior uplighting or floodlighting to accentuate the exterior of the building in the evening hours. And the third is interior lighting of the inflatable athletic facility buildings shall be turned off in the evening hours when the buildings are not in use to reduce the nighttime glow of the structures from, from potential transmission of light through the fabric walls or roof. Member Gergen, would you like to amend your, your motion to incorporate those?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve with all three conditions.
Motion by member Gergen. Is there a second on that motion with the three conditions?
Second.
Second by member Phillips. All in favor say yes.
Mr. Chair, before, we ask the applicant to acknowledge that they heard understanding agreement or the order.
This is the first I've heard of these three, three issues. I don't really think I have any big issue. I'm just want to ask the question about, you know, signage? You know, if you're talking about us exceeding the normal signage, you know, size or?
The signage on the, the condition, mentioned signage on the exterior fabric dome, so it wouldn't have a giant logo on, on, on the fabric is, is the intention of the condition.
For the benefit of, of the zoning board members, the building is eleven hundred feet long. The building is allowed two times the length for signage. So outside of the fabric part, the fifty thousand square foot building, they can have two thousand, twenty-two hundred square feet of signage. So our, our concern at the planning department is we're trying to minimize the visual impact to the surrounding community. We don't think graphics assist in, in minimizing the visual impact on the neighborhood and that, that's the rationale for that particular condition.
Would the planning department be willing to acknowledge that when we apply for our signage or if we needed a variance in our signage, that we could revisit those issues of how it would be most appropriate?
So the, the, the condition that member Gergen put forward that was suggested by the planning department, mentioned signage on the exterior of the fabric domes. So I, any type of like exterior on normal signage would not be a, a part of that condition.
That's correct.
But to say categorically, there could be no, I get Mr. Wachowski's comment because it could allow a giant sign. But I think there might be some opportunities for branding of the actual dome. And I don't know if we want to just totally preclude.
Again, if, if it's helpful, let's, let's look at the visual simulation and look, let's look at the length of this building. And I mean, the, the trees that are shown are, are at mature height of sixty to eighty feet. Again, the concern of the planning department is, is visual impact, particularly to the, the residential uses to the south. So it's, it's a condition we think is reasonable, given the magnitude of, in, in scale of this new feature within the foreground landscape. It'll be seen from a mile away.
So on, on this condition, can, can we just change it to requiring future approval of the zoning board for, for signage on, on the fabric dome? I don't think we want to categorically write it off, but I believe we want to have a review process before allowing it on, on the fabric dome.
And that would avoid Mr. Wachowski's legitimate concern that we come back with something that's like out of this world size.
Yes.
We're trying to be really good neighbors. We're actually trying to do something really good. We're not trying to float the Goodyear Blimp down Maple with a sign on like that.
Yeah, we'd be okay with that, that any signage be subject to review and approval by the zoning board.
Yeah, I, I have no objection to the, the amendment, the condition. Again, any type of graphic may have to be incorporated at, at the manufacturing process. So if the petitioner wants to come back before this board.
If they choose to do that, we may not.
To, to further amend that condition, that, that's fine with me. We would expect that they provide visual simulations and, and give a, a real feel for what this would look like, at least on that southerly wall face.
The other, the other condition within there relative to the inside lights? I, I'm not the electrical engineer. I don't know what the on-off switch, but I'm guaranteeing that I don't know whether it's not the same as turning on my bathroom lights. So to the extent we can comply with not completely turning off all the lights inside, we will do that. We are certainly trying to be the best neighbors possible. But remember, this is now a silver gray Kevlar exterior to this building. It is not, you know, some form of, you know, translucent material. So you will not see lights on the outside of this. And we're also, you know, submitting to the planning board, you know, we're going to be dark sky compliant with our lighting of our parking lot as well. We're doing everything to be as good as we can be as a neighbor here. I, I just can't answer, and I wouldn't put that condition in there. We will minimize interior lighting, especially in off-hours, because we don't want to pay for it. But I mean, we have reasons to keep our electric bills as low as possible.
And the fabric is opaque.
Yes.
So maybe we could.
We'll stipulate, we don't know what the light transmission will be now that the color of the fabric has changed. If you look at some of the neighboring athletic facilities, they purposely uplight them. Paddock Dome purposely uplights. That, that's the rationale for condition two. We don't want to accentuate something that's a thousand feet long and eighty-five feet high at its apex. So that, that's the rationale for two. I'll, I'll stipulate that the planning department doesn't know what the light transmission will be through this fabric structure. You know, we're, we're okay with, you know, not being obnoxious neighbors, uplighting things that are, that are inappropriate. But there will be some level of, of lighting required just for safety around it and snow removal and things like that. So to, can we leave it that the appropriate lighting will be in place?
Again, I, I renewed. Ask that you renew the condition too. We think it's a reasonable condition. There's no necessity to uplight a building.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess, work through these so that we make sure these read the way everybody's expecting instead of back and forth discussion. Maybe we have the right thing and maybe we don't.
Yep.
So how about we take a recess?
We'll, we'll, we'll take five.
Talk to them right now, up there? Well, no, I think they're asking us to.
Okay.
So one, we're getting ready.
Let's start.
Two.
Two, I mean, we don't need uplighting, appropriate signage.
But all that says, remember, all two says is uplighting or floodlighting. So we're okay with that, right? Three.
I think it's true lighting based on what our electrical needs will be, and we're going to minimize interior lighting when the facility is closed.
Yeah.
I don't know what it requires.
Mission two, we're fine.
I don't think there's a, the second one, the inflatable athletic facility building shall not incorporate exterior uplighting or floodlighting to accentuate the exterior of the building. And then the third one, interior lighting. I mean, I think it just needs to say, they'll take actions to reduce nighttime.
You know what? I, I would rather put something in there that kind of makes them come back because I understand it's Kevlar, but I also understand that athletes will often practice at, oh, dark thirty. So. So, you know, if there may be a need early hours, late hours, but that may be moved because of the material. Yeah.
It is okay, like we said.
What about like final approval of that pending, final approval of the material?
This is going to site plan also, right?
Oh, yeah.
Planning's getting it through site plan.
Number three.
Yeah, just take it out. And town board is lead agency on the seeker debate.
So take the number three. Any graphic design, trademark, or any other form of signage on the exterior of the fabric dome?
Matt, he's one of my best friends. I want him on a good part.
Number three, we're deleting.
So we okay with the second condition? Yep. I know. But we're not... Uplighting or floodlighting. We're not building light. That's what they're asking. Okay?
Right? They do the town's...
Like they sell it to like that out.
Yeah.
We can put parking lot light. We can still put building light. We're not getting no roof. No. So we're going to get, the first one, just going to say, has to require zoning board.
What if we simplified and said all exterior lighting to be approved?
Two, we're going to be okay, you said. And then three, we're okay with, right?
Three, there's no...
By the planning departments?
And... Yeah. 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 On the site plan. Yeah. Planning board.
Oh, you know, yes. Subject to site plan approval.
Or finesse that to stay, finesse it, massage. Okay, but... Massage that.
They'll get rid of three. Yeah, we're good. We're good.
Doesn't matter, right?
One, any sign, anything...
Yeah.
Right. Two, stay the way it is. Yes. Okay? What was that? Get rid of three. They're okay with leaving. Okay.
Well, one, we're returning signage.
Right. Right.
But we don't anticipate signage.
You're in a one so.
All right. Can everyone take their seats back again? So after discussing the matter, I believe we want to amend the conditions to read, "Any graphic design, trademark, or any form of signage on the exterior of the fabric dome shall require future ZBA approval." We want to leave the second condition as is and remove the third condition recommended by the planning departments, if that is agreeable to the petitioner.
That's acceptable, yes.
All right. Thank you.
So I'd like to renew my motion to approve with those amended conditions, read by Chairman Bray.
Motion by Member Gergen. Is there a second?
Second.
Member, by Member Schubert. Could I get a roll call on this?
Chairman Bray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schubert?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
Yeah.
Member Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Did I get a motion due during the meeting? Motion by Parker, second by Phillips, all in favor?
Hold on. Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank Kelly Phillips for her service with us. This is her last meeting, and I think you've been with us for five years now. Thank you very much, Kelly.